Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, city manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tim, and District Six, Mimi Woodson, District Seven, Walker Garrett, District Eight, Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor, John House, Post Ten at Large Counselor, Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Welcome to the October 11th City Council meeting. And before we begin our business at hand, we will begin this meeting the way we begin all our meetings, and that's by asking for God's presence with us. And we have a pinch hitter today, and we're delighted to have Pastor Monica Askew from Pastor's Harvest Monumental. Carter, okay, please, I'm sorry. Come to the podium, please, ma'am. And thank you so much for being with us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Prayer is always necessary.
Yes, ma'am.
Amen, and I am Monica Askew, the pastor of Carter Monumental CMA Church here in Columbus, Georgia. So let's go to the throne. Heavenly Father, we do thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you for life, health, and strength. Lord, and we thank you for this agenda on today. Lord, let it start off with prayer. Lord, because prayer is necessary. Lord, we thank you right now as every person in this meeting today will have a listening ear and be attentive to your voice. Lord, let no decision be made without seeking you first, because that's what you require of us. And so, Lord, we just thank you right now for being in the midst of this council meeting. Lord, being in the midst of every decision being made. And Lord, we just thank you for every person in attendance. But what you're gonna do, we're excited about it. Lord, for change to come. Change has to be brought up for change to come. And so, we thank you right now for allowing this meeting to go forth in your strength and in your power. Lord, we need you all. All of us need you. If it's not for one thing, it's another. But we know we can trust in you, because you have all power. Let us go in faith, believe in God, and trusting what he's about to do in the city of Columbus. It's in Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Wow, thank you, ma'am. And thank your church for sharing you with us this morning. All right, and if you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to our flag.
For the divisions to the power of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and ask council if they've had an opportunity to read the minutes. There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the September 27th council meeting. All in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, good, those are approved. We have a few presentations on the mayor's agenda this morning, and the first one that we're gonna call up is an update on Columbus 2025. And we've got several members there, and Chair Betsy Covington, as well as Tabitha and a number of the board members. So we'd like to invite you up. Please, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Mayor and council members and everybody in the chambers this morning. And we very much appreciate the chance to come and tell you about what's happening with Columbus 2025, which is all of our plan for how we move our community forward for the coming years, and hopefully give you a chance to ask questions if you have them. I know most of you as the president and CEO of the Community Foundation of the Chattahoochee Valley, which may seem a little strange for me to be chairing an effort to move the whole area forward in this larger perspective. But I'll tell you, as a community foundation that now has assets of $300 million, it makes us the second-largest community foundation in the state. And I say that not because that number makes us sound cool, although it kind of makes us sound cool. I say it because it underscores the fact that we are about collaboration. We are about bringing people together to accomplish something, which in our respect has to do with increasing and promoting and enabling philanthropy. Our investments have added over $100 million to the philanthropic value of our organization and to the assets that can be distributed. And to that end, I will tell you that this year, our community endowment grants will focus on projects that align with 2025. So if any of you listening to this represent a nonprofit or love work that aligns with what 2025 is doing, please go to the Community Foundation's website, which is cfcv.com, like Community Foundation Chattahoochee Valley dot com. There's a pulldown for nonprofits, and you'll see the available grants there. The grant is due October 21st, so hustle up. But we would love to hear your ideas for great projects. So because our board and our staff, and because I believe so strongly that when we collaborate on things, we go farther, faster, and we do it better. When the 2025 idea came around, we jumped on it pretty quickly. And we believe that when we make decisions together, good things happen. So you see the slide here. What is 2025? It is a collaborative economic development strategy, yes, but it's broader than that. It's a full community strategy for our region that aims to help us increase prosperity, reduce poverty, and improve the quality of life for all of our citizens. It is something new. We believe it is the framework for how our community will collectively make decisions going forward. This plan will not end in 2025. Spoiler alert, we would love to alleviate poverty by 2025, but we think we'll be well on our way. There will be a Columbus 2030. There'll be a Columbus 2035. This will be the way we do five-year plans that address the objectives that are most needed to advance our community. And what does this mean for the Columbus region? Aligned efforts, shared goals and metrics, focused strategies across government, education, businesses, nonprofits, and philanthropy. Hundreds of volunteers are involved in this effort so far, and I am pleased to assure you that the city has been a leader since day one. Not only are our mayor and our city manager members of the 2025 Implementation Committee, dozens of city staffers and department heads serve in various committees across our action areas. So who is Columbus 2025? A wide cross-section of organizations are involved in this effort. More than 300 organizations are active in one or more of our action areas. A leadership team is pictured on this slide. I'm sure you recognize some of these people, but I'm sort of hoping that you don't recognize all of them. The idea of 2025 is to produce new leadership and generate new leadership for our community. And we'll do that better and better as we move forward. We are grateful to have the involvement of these folks who are either championing the effort as specific action area chairs that align with their expertise or by supporting our capital campaign. We are very grateful they chose to give their time and talents to this effort. I want to especially recognize Audrey Tillman, who's here with us from AFLAC, and you'll hear from her in a minute. She chairs our capital campaign. Heath Shondelmeier, also with us, is from Sonovus and will follow me as chair as we enter 2023. So how and why did Columbus 2025 come about? The concept came out of our chambers' intercity trips. As we study successful cities around the country, we noticed that those that are really on fire and moving forward have these larger collaborative plans. They don't just do an economic development plan or a city plan in a silo. It all comes together. So when we came back from one of them, we said to the chamber, hey, would you guys be game if we tried to pull together something that's even bigger? And to their huge credit, the chamber said, absolutely, let's do it. So we did a thing called the Regional Prosperity Initiative in 2015 and hired a consultant, you know, like you do, to try to give us a picture of where we are now, and particularly where we stack up in relation to several cities, nine of our peer cities. And they're our peer cities because we tend to compete with them for business and for talent. And you see at the bottom of the screen here, they are Huntsville, Augusta, Chattanooga, Savannah, Montgomery, Greenville, Clarksville, Tennessee, and the cities of Fayetteville, both in Arkansas and North Carolina. I have to tell you, when we did this study, we learned some things about ourselves, some of which we knew, some were a bit of a surprise. Some of them were not very easy to hear. And I'll summarize four big reasons from that plan, I mean, from that initial study that told us it was urgent for us to move forward with Columbus 2025. First, our population growth is flat. We have not seen much growth in recent years that didn't have to do with Fort Benning. We ranked 58th out of 61 southeastern cities for population growth. We ranked 10 out of 10 cities last place for entrepreneurs starting new businesses. We have high poverty, which we knew, higher than other cities that we compared ourselves to, though, and higher than the Georgia average. And furthermore, we have, and you've heard me tell you this before, we have very low levels of economic mobility. We rank in the bottom 7% of the country for economic mobility. So people who are born poor in Columbus and our surrounding areas are likely to die poor. That's not something that we are willing to overlook or live with. We have to provide a way for people to move forward toward the American dream in our community. Generational poverty is a major problem in our community. This is not something that I need to tell you. And then fourth, we need to attract and retain talent and improve our educational attainment. We also ranked the lowest among these peer cities in terms of adults with bachelor's degrees. And we struggle with brain drain and losing talented citizens to other cities. You've also heard me tell you over the years when I've appeared here that we know that successful cities in the future are likely to be determined by their ability to attract, develop, and retain talent. We saw it during the pandemic. People can now live anywhere they want to live in the country or in the world. So they choose where they want to live first, and then they'll either develop a job once they get there, or they'll get a job. Or they work remotely and bring a job with them. We want to be one of those cities where people want to move to, and people are attracted to the idea of Columbus. We're on some great tracks, but we've got more we need to do. So how does Columbus 2025 work? Our guiding principles and our goals are realized through five action areas. Each action area is championed by a chair who partners with local organizations to collaborate and move us forward. There are five action areas, and I'll tell you about the sixth square you see up there. The first action area is cohesive image and identity. How do we tell our story of this area? Both to people who are outside of our area and may have never, have no idea where Columbus, Georgia is, but also to those of us who live here. How do we frame the way we think about ourselves as citizens of this area? Targeted economic growth. The second area is the most traditional economic development piece. You're used to thinking of a chamber with that responsibility. They do a great job at that, and we'll talk a bit more about that in a second. But that is that how do we really, instead of trying to attract every business that's out there, target the ones that are most likely to help us build and move forward? Talented Educated People is about that growing, retaining, developing talent piece. It is the largest of the action areas in terms of the number of committees underneath it. And it looks at our citizens from cradle to career. The fourth is vibrant and connected places. You won't be surprised to hear me talking to you about that because you've heard me talk to you about it before. But it's unusual for that to be involved in a program of this scope, except that we've realized that when we live in places that are beautiful and that are physically connected and make it easier for people to get around and to interact with people who are in our community who may be different from each other, you get happier residents who feel a higher level of dignity that their city has given them. You also get people who are not only physically connected, but emotionally connected to their communities. That's really important. Now we know people who are connected are more likely to vote. They're more likely to run for office. They are less likely to do things like litter and commit crime. We want citizens who are connected to each other and to the place where they live. And then enterprising culture is about how do we thoughtfully lower the barriers to starting a new business? How do we facilitate the person who has that idea that would create the next AFLAC or TSUS or Sonovus or W.C. Bradley? In 2020, we created the last square that you see up here, and we call it Equity and Economic Mobility. It's not an action area. Think of it as the lens through which we look at the work of all these other action areas. How are we fostering an equitable community that has high levels of economic mobility? So that's the lens through which we evaluate all the programs that 2025 does. So it's important to understand that even though it's called Columbus 2025, this is a regional plan. It affects the counties that are contiguous to Columbus. I will tell you that they are involved now. My guess is that by 2030 and 2035, they will be extremely involved because they will have seen the level of results that a collaborative plan produces. This is meant to impact the entire Chattahoochee Valley area. Columbus 2025 is lifting up the efforts of organizations that are aligned with our goals. It also creates new programs and initiatives to fill gaps in the community. So it's not like Columbus 2025 is a brand-new thing that's doing all its own programming. We are partnering with, we are encouraging, we're lifting up, and we're aligning efforts that may be already happening or that need to happen in new ways. This is a plan for all of us. I am very proud that this has been the city's plan and has city involvement from the very beginning when implementation began in 2017. So in the next couple of slides, I'm gonna quickly share some of the successes that we've had since we started. It's really important to understand that these successes have been generated through annual giving campaigns. And I mean, during COVID, you know, that was a challenge, right? We're proud of what we've done. We're ready to take things to the next level, but we've had some great success. Startup Columbus is a 501(c)(3) organization with a mission to open entrepreneurship to all citizens in our region. They offer a startup incubator that has desks, conference rooms, podcast areas, everything that you would need to have a successful business. Startup Columbus teaches a 12-week course designed to take an entrepreneur from an idea to a real business with added support from mentors and investors that follow the program. So far, they've graduated 106 businesses, and they'll graduate even more before the end of 2022. They've also incubated 23 businesses and continue to grow and expand that effort with plans for a retail incubator space on Broadway and another incubator in the Mill District. Through scholarships, seed investments, competition prizes, and grants, they've added more than $250,000 to startup investment since 2020, and there are plans for an angel investor network on the horizon. So this is a game-changing organization for our community and has filled a missing piece of our entrepreneur ecosystem. In terms of branding, we have created a cohesive brand that helps us talk about ourselves and tell our story to a broader audience. We launched the We Do Amazing brand with a new website and social media to help communicate the positive stories of our amazing Columbus and combat some of the negative views that we too often see at the top of a Google search. We have selected Jackson Spalding, which is a national marketing firm headquartered in Atlanta, who's done wonderful promotional work for a number of cities around the country and for successful businesses across the country, to help put us on the map at our rightful place with the other top southern cities. And they've already done great work as we prepare to promote Columbus outside of our region. We have attracted jobs and capital investment to our region. Our targeted economic development growth action area focuses on this traditional economic development supported by the Columbus Chamber and the Development Authority of Columbus. So well done, you guys, for that important support. I want to give a major pat on the back to those guys. In August, they announced a new company, AFV International, which makes dog food taste better to dogs. I said the other day, I have two cocker spaniels who probably don't care, they would eat anything. But I know that there are picky eaters out there, and this company is gonna bring an investment of $79 million in a new facility, an additional 100 jobs to the Columbus region over the next five years. And they'll be at Muskogee Technology Park. We've been working hard to raise Columbus's profile with economic development groups, particularly around the state. We've hosted the Georgia Department of Economic Development Board, the Georgia Chamber Congressional Luncheon. And this year, we'll see Leadership Georgia return to Columbus for their big anniversary gala. And they're here for the first time in a very long time. I forget the number of years. It's been longer than it should have been. Next spring, we'll host the Red Carpet Tour for the first time in over a decade. And all of this effort helps us land major projects such as AFV and bring jobs to the Columbus region. We launched the Basics of the Chattahoochee Valley to engage our community on the importance of actual brain development of children from birth to age three, getting them ready for pre-K and kindergarten, yes, but also developing their brains so that they can learn for the remainder of their lives at a rate commensurate with their abilities. It's part of a larger community focus on kindergarten readiness and third-grade reading proficiency. If children miss the milestone for reading proficiency in third grade, their chances for high school graduation decline and their potential for earning another skill attainment lesson. So it's why this age is so critical, and our community is focused on making the most out of these early years. Any of you listening or watching, if you have young children in your life, please check out cv.thebasics.org. These are five, sorry? cv.thebasics.org. These are five easy things that you can incorporate into daily life. It's not hard stuff. There are videos on there that show you how to do it, but it's actual brain development. The Basics, this is a great example of the way 2025 works. The Basics lives at United Way with a director that's there. It's been funded for the first three years from the Community Endowment Fund at the Community Foundation. Our board felt like this was important to get off to the right start. So we funded it for three years. So check it out. And finally, in terms of vibrant and connected places, I hope that you have already seen these murals on the front of the A.J. McClung YMCA on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. If you haven't, please, 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 drive by, take the dragonfly, and walk by or bike by. Check them out. The mural was unveiled in June of this year. And at that event, Columbus 2025 announced we would be adding five additional new murals to the region this fall in a project called Painted Spaces. And the idea is to commission local artists to create murals in areas and neighborhoods that currently have limited access to public art. There was a call for artists that recently closed, and right now, we've gotten over 40 submissions from local artist, art students, and creatives. In the next couple of weeks, we're having multiple community meetings to gather insight, art, ideas, and inspiration from all community members. So get ready to see some great new art around the community. So you have seen that Columbus 2025 is already producing significant results. We're proud of that. But it's time to accelerate that progress. Audrey Tillman is gonna come up and tell you more about how critical it is that our next phase finds a new gear for our area. Thanks, Audrey. I'll give you your first slide.
Thank you. Thank you, Betsy, for painting such a vivid and timely picture. And thank you, council, for having us today. It's really important that we connect with you and make you aware of what has been going on and our plans for what is to be with Columbus 2025. And I especially want to thank Mayor Henderson and City Manager Hughley for your consistent support from the very beginning as part of the steering committee and just being there and lending your voice and representing the council and the city in all of our plans to date. So thank you for that. Betsy went through the five action areas that we have narrowed down into three actionable steps. And we've done that because it's time to take Columbus 2025 to a new gear. This city has been so fortunate and so blessed by the private and public donors that have created some of the development and the excitement that we experience today. Columbus will rise to the challenge to fund things, and we've seen that for decades and have lived the benefit of that. But we're at a point now, especially with Columbus 2025, that we need to be transformational in this city's growth and development. And if we're going to be transformational, then we've got to have more effort, more intensity, and more investment than we've ever seen before. So that is why I'm here today to make the case for the critical need to begin some major, major investments. We've had some members of the private community come forward and make some significant pledges for investment in this. And we're here today with the city because we need the city's participation and leadership in the investment of Columbus 2025 going forward. Now is the time. So the first bucket is jobs. Everything starts and stops with jobs. People need jobs, and jobs are what increase revenue. Jobs are a major, major focus and have been of Columbus 2025. One of the things that I learned sitting on the search committee for our chamber president was that Columbus, this area was behind in terms of formalizing and advancing an economic development program, that the cities that we were looking to draw from were ahead of us in that. And so, we have made it as a mission for Columbus 2025 to be the best economic development program in the state. And that takes some purposeful, actionable efforts. It also takes investment to get Columbus placed via social media and via the web, where people who are looking to move their organizations can look and see who we are and what we are before we even begin to pitch to them. That's how economic development works in most recent years. We had not been, we're getting there.[1684.98] We had not been, we, we're getting there, we're certainly taking valuable steps, but we want to already be there. We want people to have just about made up their minds because of our presence before we even begin to make the pitch. That's how it's being done in modern times and that's going to take significant investment. We also have put as a goal to add 6,000 new direct and indirect jobs resulting in $300 million in new annual payroll. That is a goal of ours and we've got initiatives and things in place to reach that goal. And just as an aside, anybody who's worked with me either at Aflac or anything else knows, I'm not a huge fan of consultants. I'm, I'm an action oriented woman and I want to know what is the plan to get there? Not what we think about, but what is the plan? And so, I can assure you that with all of the buckets and the initiatives that we have under those buckets, they're actionable, they're measurable, we will know where we are at any particular time, we'll know how the investment is being made, and we'll know the expected outcome. That was very important to us and to me personally as we move forward shaping these initiatives. So, I hope that gives you a level of comfort with this. The next is talent. We'll have the jobs, we got to have the talent because people want to come to places where they can either easily attract talent or there's a talent base that's there. And so, as we looked at the talent bucket, we have placed attracting new talent, retaining the talent that we have, and cultivating talent so that we are growing through our school system, a talent base that will stay here and will be ready to work. And that doesn't just mean the, the college educated people that Betsy referred to earlier, but it means people who are ready to go to work right after high school. They're ready to go. They've been trained, they've been involved in the programs that we'll be implementing and they will be that workforce ready to go when employers make decisions about moving to Columbus, Georgia and to this region. And you see here a really, really important stat, but it's very eye opening, that it's not going to take a lot to really move us in a powerful and transformational direction. The current Muskogee County population is 321,900 citizens. If we grow by just 12,876 residents, less than 13,000 who all have an average income of $56,000, we can add $731 million to our economy. That's not a lot of people, but it is a lot of people. So, we've got to put initiatives and things in place to reach that number and we have those in place, but it takes investment. These are new things that have not been done that we believe through research and, and discussion with others who have done it, they can do it, we can do it. We can do it better than that because that's what Columbus does. And also place, place is extremely important. It's, it's so important to the generations behind all of us and increasing in importance. We've got to make where we live attractive, interesting, and drawing to the generations to come. We've got to start marketing in a meaningful and transformational way who we are and what we do. And so, the great news is who we are and what we do is great, we've got a great story. And everybody who's looked in this, everybody who we've asked to give their opinion says the same thing, you've got a great story here. You've got some great things that you can sell, you got to start selling it. And we've done some things, I don't at all want to diminish the work of, you know, people like the Convention and Visitors Bureau and places that have been marketing Columbus, but again, what I'm talking about is transformational work, work that makes Columbus on the mouths of people who are looking to have a mid-sized convention. We should be killing the mid-sized convention game with what we have here, but it takes money. We've got to go to the conventions, we've got to draw them, we've got to get our name out there, we've got to be in a multimedia presence where everything we've been doing, everything this council's been working on can be showcased in a purposeful way. It takes money. And marketing's the kind of thing, people get a little nervous about marketing because they think it's all art, but I'm here to tell you, there's some science to marketing too. And there are things to my earlier point that we are looking at, we are measuring, we know when it's working, we know where it's not. One of the things that I think is really important and Jackson Spalding, our marketing firm, has confirmed that, we've got to have more third-party validation for what we do here. We, we can't just know we're great and let that be that. So, there are publications and magazines and lists that people watch, it's very important to them. Are they on the best southern cities? Are they on the best places for millennials to live? Are they on these things? Okay, they are, let's have our convention there, let's move our location there. Those are the kinds of things that we can go after with resources, be successful, and increase the name and brand recognition of Columbus and this area and we have plans to do that. Wanted to just show you because this also paints a picture, when we talk about the marketing spend, as I said, we haven't spent nothing, but what we spend relative to cities that we are compared to for the kinds of things we want, like jobs, like conventions, like visitors, it's, it's a fraction of those other cities. You see us at 77,000, the next closest is 200,000. Cities like Savannah and Augusta, I mean, so much more than we spend. And in a, in the space of marketing, I can tell you, you get what you pay for and you don't get what you don't pay for and we're not paying very much. And to, again, be transformational in terms of where we want this city and this region to be, got to increase that, that takes hard dollars. Our annual Visitors Bureau marketing spend, again, I mean, when you're dealing with Asheville at, you know, 21 million, thankfully, I'm not asking for that, so that's the good news or even close to that, but we've got to increase what we're spending if we want to play with these cities who are also competing with us for talent, for marketing and brand, and for professional relocation and economic development. So, one of the things that I hope that you all will be proud of, I'm very proud of and Betsy referenced it very briefly, we have worked across a number of organizations who are in the business in their own pockets of doing what Columbus 2025 is doing, but I'm very proud of our efforts to collaborate, to coordinate, to minimize duplication. I mean, when you've got a lot of agencies working on different things and they all have similar goals, you can have some duplication. We haven't had time for that. We don't have time for that, we've got to move. So, we've put a lot of time into supporting, facilitating, coordinating, and getting people together to be on the same page so that we can move in the same direction. That's taken years and I don't want to in any way minimize the effort that it took to get us here, but I can tell you now that the organizations that are moving with Columbus 2025 and we're moving with them simultaneously, they get it, they're excited, they want to move forward together because they see how moving together can get us to the end goal quicker. So, we, we've done that work and we continue to do it and it's important to the mission that we remain together and on mission. So, the budget, the overall budget is $11 million and like I said, we've been on the capital campaign trail for the last couple of months and we've had great success, great success from the public, from the private sector. Again, this city has shown that it will invest in things that are important and they are continuing to do so with Columbus 2025. But I'll be very candid with you, honest with you, we've got some major investors who are excited about what we're doing, who have made verbal, at least very, very strong insinuations that they're going to invest in a major level, but they have point blank asked, what is the city going to do? Is the city going to invest in this? Does the city support this? And I can certainly say, yes, they support it because we see our mayor and our city manager very involved, but they're talking dollars. So, I'm, I'm here today to tell you that people are looking and watching to see what type of economic investment the city is going to make and I hope that that's going to be significant. We are looking roughly from the city for about $3 million and over three years, so a million dollars a year is certainly acceptable and encouraged, but that's the ask and I believe with great confidence that if the city would consider that and give a green light to that, then we will have financial investments from a multitude of places that are kind of waiting on what the city's going to do and we will reach our goal because this is good work. And my thoughts are that this is work that the city should be very excited about because our goals as 2025 should be the city's goals. It's to advance us in all of those areas that Betsy and I have been talking about. So, this is an opportunity. I, I say it all the time, I probably said it to some of you, I believe firmly that in 10 years, we're going to look back at this moment and say, man, we, we really did some great work. We transformed this city and this region by the work that was done in Columbus 2025. So, we're right there, we're right there and I would love, this initiative, would love for the city to make a confident and bold statement of their agreement about the direction that Columbus 2025 is going for all the citizens. So, with that, I'm going to show a very, very brief, like three-minute video and afterwards, if there are any questions, we've got several members of the committee here, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I guess the second question is, I'm following along.
Oh.
There is nobody there.
Sorry.
Yep, she was. Well. Okay. Please.
Well, while they're looking for the video, let me just, let me just say that, you know, having had an opportunity to participate in, in the meetings with the, these individuals that have worked so hard on 2025, the thing that is exciting about it is it began with a look at our flaws. It began with a look at the things that separate us from where we are to becoming the city we want to be and that we frankly deserve to be as Georgia's second largest community. And 2025 frankly is, if you look around the community, there's a lot of grassroots efforts that take care of some of these social challenges and we want them to continue in, in neighborhoods and in different parts of our community, but this is the only vehicle that, that provides a very clear, ordered, and, and, and a plan to, to address a lot of the ills that frankly, even people that don't admit it, every citizen in this community is impacted by, whether it's a, a, a need for a greater and more skilled workforce, whether it's poverty, whether it's low education scores, all of these things impact every single individual. Don't think just because your child is doing well in school, that an area of our community that is not doing well doesn't impact your family because it absolutely does. And I, I know I've spoken to the city manager and, and the challenge for council, I think when we talk about an investment and, and this city has always stepped up, whether it was for Mercer, whether it was for the arts, whether it was for the Film Commission, the city government has always stepped up and participated because that public-private partnership has to be hand in hand. And, but I think what we need to do for council is we're going to get staff to come up with two or three different ideas on how we would be able to provide this type of investment from the city in order to partner with the private sector in moving our community forward. And then they'll come back maybe at the next meeting with some of these ideas and present to council so that council won't have to wonder where that, that money would, would, would come from. I, I, I consider it an investment, but I think as, as, as you have to do with all investments, you have to be wise in where you pull the money from and make sure that you feel confident that you've got that ROI coming back. So, we'll move forward. Did we find the video?
Yes.
Okay. I stalled just long enough.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, we can, we can email it to you. It's a really nice video and we're starting to use it a lot.
Well, and, and you know, I think to highlight the fact that, that, you know, of all the potential this community has, and I see Pace and I see Ed Wolverton and I see all these folks that worked tirelessly on the International Canoe Federation. We had people from about 18 different countries that were in our community. They were astounded, the comments, and frankly, this was, this was sort of a dry run to get it right for the world championships that are coming next year and, and make those great. Well, the interesting thing was they worked so hard as our folks always do and made this year great. And so, when we show people what we have here in Columbus, Georgia, and, and I mean the entire region because certainly it impacted Phoenix City, Mayor Lowe was, was over at the event as well, but it goes up into Harris County and over into Chattahoochee. So, anything that happens that highlights the significance of our community to this many folks from outside our community is a, is a very good thing.
Very good.
You want to introduce the board members that are here from 2025?
Yeah, and we're, we're happy to entertain any questions or if there's additional information that we can provide you, let us know. We can get it to you right away.
WC Bradley.
We have several folks here from Columbus 2025, Tabitha Gatz, who is our executive director, Pace Halter from WC Bradley Real Estate, who's working with us on the capital campaign and on our leadership, Becca Zajak with Dragonfly Trails, who chairs the Vibrant and Connected Places piece, and Heath Shondelmeyer, bless him, who will be doing a better job than I have done as of January 2023. So, we're happy to take questions if you have them. This video is looking really sharp and it sounds even better and we'll send it to you.
In alignment with our community partners, our key goals will
Okay, we're getting it together, guys. Thank you.
Columbus 2025 is a broad collaboration across our area between business, nonprofit, government, and citizens to strengthen our community. The Columbus region is an amazing place to live, work, visit, and play and for far too long, we've been Georgia's best kept secret. Now, we're telling our story, marketing our assets and increasing our brand awareness to attract jobs, talent, and investment. In alignment with our community partners, our key goals will increase our competitiveness and position Columbus to take a big step forward. Like never before, our region has come together to increase prosperity, reduce poverty, and improve our quality of life by focusing on jobs, talent, and place. We're home to some big names in business, Aflac, Sanovus, Tesis, WC Bradley, and Pratt and Whitney. Our targeted economic development efforts will position us for what's next as we drive innovation and support businesses and startups to grow jobs and capital investment. Columbus 2025 will attract, retain, and develop a sustainable workforce essential to our region's growth. The economy of the future depends on the ability to work from anywhere. Recently named one of the best cities for remote work, we are primed and perfectly sized to attract talent to call Columbus home. From cradle to career, we're building a workforce pipeline to fill the jobs of the 21st century. Cultivating talent and focusing on education, we will combat generational poverty, increase our education attainment, and grow our population. The Columbus region offers a dynamic and diverse quality of life. We're creating vibrant and connected neighborhoods and public spaces, investing in the arts, trails, outdoor recreation, and a focus on our river where urban whitewater with class five rapids makes for a one-of-a-kind experience right here at home. Meaningful progress requires major investment. In recent decades, community leaders have invested in the development of our region. Columbus 2025 is designed to amplify that investment with cross-sector collaboration and a community focus. Columbus 2025, one plan, one vision, one community, working together for a greater
Worth the wait. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, you, you've made some comments and this, what I've heard this morning has gotten me even more excited about Columbus 2025. I, I, you know, as the presenters presented today and I look at who's serving on the leadership team and, you know, I see CEOs and executives of nonprofit organizations here and when I think about Betsy Covington and what she does, not just for the community and the region, and then Audrey Tillman and what you're doing, not just in Columbus but worldwide, and then I see Heath Shondelmeyer, who is President of Sanovus, and you got Pace Halter out there with Bradley, and, and Jimmy Yancey came to visit with us yesterday and what he has done and continues to do for Columbus. And then I thought about the fact, you're not elected, you don't get paid for this, you don't get a stipend, and I asked myself, why are they doing this? And, and it obviously came to me that it's because you love Columbus, Georgia, and you want to leave Columbus better for your children, my children, our children, and their families in the future. And, and, and it just dawned once again on me how important the work of 2025 is and, and I say that because I've been involved with Columbus 2025, but it's our plan for how we move Columbus, Georgia and the region forward and Betsy, you said it, it's our roadmap, a guide, our strategic plan for the future of our city. I, I heard you say that it's a game-changing organization for our community and, and, and a full community strategy for the region. It is how we will make decisions going forward and Audrey Tillman talked about it being a transformational and with with uh, assurance saying that we will rise to the challenge. And then you talked about what the private sector has said verbally they will do, but they want to know what will the city do? And uh, but this is just, it's, it's awesome and it's for the good of Columbus, our future. It makes us competitive with all of those cities that you, you've listed. And so I, I wanted to take the opportunity to make my points and, and say thank you and, and I hope that the city will rise to the occasion and join the private sector in getting this done for the good of our community, our children, and the future. So thank you for coming uh, today.
Thanks, sir. Counselor, Counselor Woodson?
Yes, I wanted to say thank you for the presentation this morning. Um, pictures speak louder than words. Um, it was very amazing to see all the different entities. Um, and the video was amazing. I would only make one suggestion because I'm very proud of it as a military person and being in Columbus. Um, I would love to see in your next video the fun of Fort Benning, that collaboration that we did, private-public partnership and taxpayers to make that entrance to Fort Benning so beautiful, especially when it's the second largest installation in the world. And um, especially since we are such a partner with Fort Benning and to make it very clear, and I've noticed this when I go to um, Winsec Hispanic Celebration, a lot of the um, people that went through Winsec or was stationed in Winsec are now residents of Columbus, Georgia. A lot of military leave, a lot of um, General White is one good example. Um, Carmen Cabeza is another good example. They've been stationed here, House, myself, Pops. We've been stationed here, but we saw the beauty of Columbus and we decided to make Columbus our home. We could have picked anywhere in the world because we've traveled through so many communities. We've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly in every um, community we've been in. We've even been overseas. We've seen the worst of the worst and the best of the best, but yet we chose Columbus, Georgia. And to tribute that dedication, I just feel we need to show a little bit more of Fort Benning.
That's a great point. And you should know, we've had a number of Columbus 2025 implementation meetings at Fort Benning. They've been involved in everything. So you're pointing out something and I'm thinking.
Just, just want to
It's good. This is how we make it better. This is how we make it better.
I didn't want to be disrespectful, but I just think that, you know, they play such a big role. Another personal, this is personal, I want to say thank you. Um, the Hispanic community is usually never presented in a video. And I saw that you did uh, uh, one of the Mexican restaurants in Uptown, and I thought that was very impactful to me. As a Latina, it's very important that we feel united and we don't, but we're working on that. That's what the festival is about, to teach people our different cultures, to bridge that. And I'm very proud and very excited to see that 2025 acknowledge us in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, appreciate y'all coming today and presenting. Um, and I also want to thank each and every one of you for your contributions to our community. I know you love our city and we all love our city and we want to definitely see the best for it as it moves, uh, and moves in a direction for the younger generation. Uh, you know, a lot of us will be making, you know, important decisions of our own here soon as far as where we go next, but that younger generation is our city. It's the future of our city. So thank you again for your contributions and caring. I got a, I got a question and a couple nuggets for you if you don't mind, but um, I, I looked at the uh, presentation of the uh, contribution of cities as far as marketing, what they invest in marketing in their city, and ours was 77K. And I just wanted to ask you a question. Where, where did that number come from? How did you come up with that 77K? Because it's, you know, when I see what, go ahead.
That's what the Development Authority of Columbus has budgeted for marketing out of their annual budget this year.
For the economic development.
For the economic development, um, marketing efforts for the Development Authority of Columbus. This is a little bit larger than it was last year.
Yeah, well, when I saw that, it was just shockingly low, you know, from an investment part of in our community because I was equating it to the amount of money going to the CVB, the Sports Council and other places that's actually out there marketing our city in a broader aspect. So when you look at that, it just, you know, it, it, I was trying to figure that number out because if it did not equate, or it did equate to what I just commented on, I'd be really, really concerned about that, shockingly concerned.
And then of course, the next slide talks about the visitor investment and marketing that comes through CBD. And what we just heard in Asheville for Toya who was on the trip and city manager was that money is generated largely through hotel motel and in their case, short-term rental times. And so last year while you saw Asheville had $22 million to spend. Y'all help me make sure I got this number right. Next year it's 46 million.
I think it was 40.
They had such huge visitation during COVID. So when we talk about this as an investment, it's really important to realize that a lot of this money starts coming back around as they're successful. Sorry.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we are those agencies that I talked about that we're getting the dollars out there where they need to be in, in marketing our community because that's what we, we sell that and, and it's somewhat of an expense that we collect to do exactly that. We just want to make, we don't hear or see or measure, we don't see that a lot from our perspective, but it's out there. Just want to make sure that they're doing the right thing. The uh, the connectivity that you talked about, I, I, you know, first of all, the, the, I think the partnership is very doable and the viability of it, uh, I'm, I think the city manager is going to be looking into it to see what exactly we can do and how to be able to do that. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that. The, the connectivity aspect, which I, I would ask if this group can help partner with the city. One of the things that I see that I think is a connectivity as, aspect from a website of, of easy access, um, we've got a lot of agencies out there, a lot of nonprofits. We do a lot of stuff in our community. But I just think it's difficult for people to navigate out there, whether it's a website or through the internet or however, to get to these places and create that connectivity amongst all of them. And I would love, I've, I've talked about this here at this council about updating our websites and getting to the point of where when you go there, it's so easy to navigate that anybody can do that and connect to where they need help. Are you, you're hearing what I'm saying?
So you're talking about connectivity from a service need standpoint of citizens?
What we, what we have in our community that's going to help people, well, we've talked about through this presentation. There's a lot of people in need and we're trying to address that. That's one thing we can do better, I think.
Yep, I think you're right.
And I'm asking, I guess, if your group can help work on that to make that happen through the city, especially with what we're doing. Maybe our investment as a public-private partnership can help in that area to make that happen.
So one of the things that Jackson Spalding is looking at is, is like I told you, how we tell our story internally. And so yes, the exterior, the, is exterior the right word? The external marketing, right? But also the internal marketing and part of that is how citizens connect with things. So Jackson Spalding is providing language and information that any organization in our community can use on their own websites. I'm going to lift up 211 um, for you. If you're not familiar with it, United Way runs it. It is a fantastic resource for people who need help, but maybe they don't even know exactly what they need. And 211 is staffed with people who can listen and who are well aware of all of the services that are out there and plug people into the right place. You can go to 211, I think it's 211.org on the website. Thank you. You can text 211 and you get a response text back. So we need to tell that story better because the help is out there. And I think the city already features 211 on its own website. So that's good, but we can always do better work. So you're, you're spot on.
Yeah, I just, I think it's some of the things that I hear in the community about that navigation out there and being able to connect, creating that map of, of all the wonderful things that, that we do. A lot of agencies do. There's a lot of redundancy and duplication and all. We should all be working together. I think all of that would help to collaborate and serve our community better. So I would ask you if y'all would partner with us to help
Absolutely.
us do that with some of the, uh, with some of the support here.
Well, well, not only that, but again, it's, it's about telling the story that's already out there. And I think the city, all of us have done a great job in making sure if you're looking for us, there's something here for you to see. But where we need to get to is we're telling you before you ask. And that also goes to your point about what you're already doing in the city and what's already available, but being proactive in the approach and truly marketing what is there internally to our internal citizens and also externally. That can be wrapped up very nicely in our overall marketing strategy. So point well taken.
That'd go a long ways in helping people in need in our community, I believe. And then the last one, that's one nugget. The second one is just, uh, I, I really, you know, we talk about this in our community, but we really never, we really never seem to address it. Actually, it's a nationwide kind of matter. But look, it's, it's a fact that some people are just not going to make it through school, all right? And we talk about the issues that happen during that time and then after that time, what happens. It, it costs a lot of money. You guys know what I'm talking about. How can we reach these kids at a younger age and maybe send them in a different direction? They may not be good at math or English or science or things like that, but how can we teach them a trade? And I'll get, I'll use myself as an example. It really helped me. In high school, summer school, we, I, I came from a pretty, you know, it was a low-income neighborhood and, and uh, it was a rough neighborhood. Uh, but we had summer school, which was fantastic. And there were trades. And I learned so much through metal shop and wood shop. It was unbelievable what I learned that just created a spark in me to use my hands to get me to where I am today. Everything that I did, it touched. I might not have been so good in the books, but that created a lot of character, a lot of character strengths and traits in me that cannot be duplicated. I think that in the business I'm in now, I see so much need, jobs. You talk about jobs. How do we get our people employed? These young kids could come out of school and make a lot of money if they already know a trade. There's so many jobs out there. We can't even find people to do these trades. Carpentry, plumbing, electricity. You just keep going through. People can make a fantastic living at the age of 18 and actually be able to afford, it's expensive to get an apartment and things these days, living, but they could actually make a, a, a wage that would help them sustain themselves and get them on their feet to, to go on to do better things. So I hope that that part would be
Yeah.
maybe a challenge with the group and the partnership as somewhere it fits into your message.
Absolutely, a big piece of what we're doing. You are so right. Yep.
I don't have to tell you about the statistics of how many people are falling through the cracks.
Yep.
Maybe we can help save those people and send them in a better direction just by teaching them a trade. And that's going to take some thought, but I think it's very viable.
No, I think it's a really good point. And when we talk about talented, educated people, that's a lot of what we're talking about. Think about entrepreneurship, not as just people who are going to start a techno firm, although they certainly can do that. But people who are going to start exactly the type of businesses you're talking about. How can startup Columbus help them with a business plan and the business, the money to get them, the tools they need to get the business started. And the other thing that should give you some comfort level is that the current chair of the Talented Educated People Action Area is Martha Ann Todd, who's the president at Columbus Tech. And if you guys have not come in touch with Martha Ann Todd since she got to town, I want to encourage you to sit down with her. She is a dynamo who is on fire about exactly what you're discussing, how easy it is for people to become active, um, high-earning members of our society without a traditional college degree. So yeah, that's absolutely part of our picture, but thank you for recognizing that.
Yeah, and you got to get them in high school because look, hey, you know, we talk about transportation needs. We talk about, a lot of kids just cannot, these young kids can't get to these
They don't know that.
tech schools and universities. It's tough for them to do that.
Yep.
But if they learned it in high school, my point is at 18, they could be making a very good living in this community because you, we, we, we can't fill positions right now. We don't, I mean, they're out, we're trying to. People in trade industry are trying to find
Yep.
good people. So there's jobs waiting.
I live in a hundred-year-old house and I will tell you that there is not a plasterer in our community right now. So guess who's doing the plaster work at my house? I could use a little help. So um, yeah, I um, I will tell you, one of the things about 2025 that I'm really excited about is the way our school district has embraced partnering with Columbus Tech and CSU and Troy and other institutions in our community in whole new ways. Not just to educate teachers that will bring ideas into our classrooms, but to give access to students so that these ideas can be propagated at an early age. So this is good.
Those are a couple seeds that I just planted with you that I hope that the, an investment can make it, those kind of things happen. Thank you again for coming today and presenting. We appreciate you.
Thanks, sir. Yep, Duel and Roman is an amazing tool if we can get more kids to use. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, thank you. And I absolutely enjoyed myself. I wanted to thank, um, I think it was a Mr. Dunn Jones who sponsored me for the inner-city trip. And I'm so appreciative. I'm thankful for individuals that sponsored me to the NACO trip. And as I mentioned to you, that the things that I saw at NACO and also in Asheville, what we are doing now, award-winning, you know, innovative, thought-provoking things um, here. And what I wanted to ask, is this um, this chart somewhere for the public to view?
Help us with that. It is, it is not released anywhere today.
It's easy enough to put on our website. If that's something that you guys would like, we can certainly make that document public.
So one, one of the things, and I think I was um, making reference when we were speaking, when I was, you know, stationed in Montgomery and different places, I would look back and see what was going on in Columbus. Um, and I, I do agree about marketing and telling our story. But when I saw attract talent and launching a relocation attraction program, you know, a young Toya would have been like, hmm.
Yes.
You know, you're going to pay me to come back home?
Absolutely, we are.
Yeah, I probably would have came back a little sooner.
Right.
But um, it's, it's things like this that, as I mentioned, award-winning because when you're at these conferences, we're sitting at the table and we're trying to um, attract and retain. You know, that's one of the, the top things that we talk about. And just seeing just that line um, in, in um, the attract, retain, and develop talent, that's amazing, you know, for you all to have come up with that, that program. And also, I'm, I'm a big supporter of co, um, community schools.
Yes.
Um, and actually Parent Romero, when we had the incident with unfortunately, the young girl who passed away, it was community schools that reached out to me and, and they took donations and we went to that family house. So when, where, and, and this is something that we invest in, um, because they have this information, but it's, it's us working together. We're talking about collaborations and how, you know, we support one another. This is in here.
Yes.
You know, that's why I said, I'm asking is
We found
put it out there.
There are definitely areas in this budget that are things that exist that needed a boost to expand community schools. So this million dollars is also a match for a federal grant that they wrote. So they're going to be able to benefit from the money we're raising to expand communities and schools even further.
Yes.
Or Community Schools United, that's the correct name. So I want to make sure I get that right. But it is, we do view that as a game changer in helping uh, parents, families, children at the elementary level, get the services they need early on. And I think that what you just mentioned about wrapping their arms around that family during that time is so critical to the success. But um, you'll see things in there, uh, in this budget that are maybe things that you already support. The city can certainly take a look at those things and um, make, make decisions.
Yes, and then also I know Community Schools United is expanding. Yes, and then also I know Community Schools United is expanding, um, you know, hopefully they'll be able to get in the new Dawson, um, whatever it's going to be renamed to, elementary school, but not just Columbus, Phoenix City, but also Stewart County. So, as you mentioned, this is a regional effort. Um, I mean, there's just so many good things that are listed in here that I think our community needs to see, that this is something award-winning and innovated, innovative. And I can't wait
Yeah.
to submit awards to NACO, NACCG.
Well, we appreciate your enthusiasm about it. I'm super excited about the talent attraction piece as well. I'm of that age where a lot of people I grew up with are no longer here but would come back. And I think we need to start marketing that type of a program to attract those individuals to come home, buy a house, you know, do all the things, be a part of the community again. Other cities are doing it. I think about thirty cities nationwide. Now's the time to kind of start on this for us, um, because other cities are already, already there. And we have, we have lost residents over the years that would be willing to come home, I think. And so, we just need to tell that story a little better.
Thank you.
Thank you, Toya. Appreciate you.
Well, since, since I'm next on the queue here, I'll go ahead and take my turn. Uh, I just wanted to say real quick, several of us had a chance to meet with, uh, with, with Tabitha and Audrey and Betsy and the board last week. And it, it's very exciting to see the public-private partnership get revitalized. And we, we were basically the, we, we make, we cut the mole. We set, we set everything in place for that. I think other communities are envious of what Columbus has done in that, in that area. But one thing that I was real impressed with, the city manager, was that they committed to come back and provide updates. And I think that's what obviously we would be interested in and, and the citizens would as well, just to get that report card going. And so, they had already thought about that and it was, they were ready to go with it. So, I appreciate you for that. And, uh, thank you. And, uh, Counselor Thomas?
One of the things I, I struggle with at times is how do we get the word out to our community about what's going on in our community? And I think that we, uh, need to do a much better job of that to talk to, you guys all know, because you, you know, you're in the, in the know. But we need to make sure that our community folks know what's happening and what's happening for good in our community. One of the things I wanted to say to, to Counselor Davis, I have been told that the, uh, technical programs in the high school and Columbus Tech are always looking for scholarships for their kids to buy the tools that they need to do the job and to do the work. Not to pay their tuition, but to, to do the tools, because those are pretty expensive, uh, tools. So, if you know anybody that got a few extra dollars, tell them to send it to, to those folks. The other thing is the, the mayor spoke about the, um, freestyle kayaking. Uh, I heard a report yesterday about, uh, the, that weekend event. You know, the, the river has always played such a big part in Columbus since its inception, and it continues to do so today. The, um, freestyle kayaking is coming back to Columbus next year. They don't do that usually. They don't go back. They go somewhere else. But they're coming back to Columbus. I want it to be, you know, you say, uh, the, the tennis world cup, Wimbledon. I want people to say, the kayaking world cup, Columbus. They said that, um, one of the reports that they got from the people who were running that competition was the cooperation of everybody in Columbus, Georgia to make sure that their competition went well. They talked about the hotels, uh, that they stayed in, the restaurants that they went to, the other kinds of things. They talked about the fact that Georgia Power held water back at the dam so that the, the kayaking course would have enough water and the right, uh, depth of water to do the kayaking. And, and they said that doesn't happen, you know? But because of the co-, uh, connection that our folks have with Georgia Power, they were glad to do that. And so, I think, you know, my mother used to say, he who tooteth not his own horn does not get his horn tooted. We need to toot our horn. We need to toot our horn and tell everybody, this is what's going on in Columbus, and this is what can happen in Columbus. And as that World Cup freelance, um, freestyle, uh, kayaking comes to Columbus, it's going to be a big deal. It's going to be, uh, both financially and, you know, the World Cup in Columbus, Georgia. So, uh, let, let's do whatever we can to get that word out. I think that there are a lot of people in Columbus who don't even know that took place this weekend, much less the impact that it's going to be able to have on our community and our economy. When those people stayed in the hotels, they paid hotel motel tax, you know? So, we need to be, be really sure that we're doing what we need to do to get the word out about how good Columbus really is and with our own people as well as the rest of the, of the known world. Thank you guys for what you're doing. I think it's a terrific, uh, project. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to, uh, what's next and how we go, how we move from here.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, um, thanks to Judy. It probably came to my mind. Um, I went to a couple of the kayak events and, um, some of the participants said the reason they liked Columbus was that partnership. They felt at home because some of them lived like in a van. And thanks to Whitewater made a mobility for them where to stay in the Phoenix City area. They provided them a place where they can park their vans, their RVs. They were able to take showers. They were able to cook dinner. And they had said that that has not happened to them in other communities, that that's what made it, um, the historic district needs to get some credit. Um, twice they provided a meal and event and music for them. At first, you could see them nervous, kind of walking into, you know, the community. They were like unsure because they come from different countries and different, and they're different cultures. But, um, I talked to some of the, um, people like from Japan and Korea, because I was stationed in Korea. So, I was interested. And one of the German guy, and they said at first they were nervous, but what they felt the hospitality of the people of the historic district, they felt right at home. So, it's important that, you're right, that we market that. And I did talk to, um, I forget her name all the time, from the sports council.
Mary.
Mary. She was there and she was telling me all these different events that are coming up. We need them to come to council and talk about those events. I put it on my Facebook and I had some families that went out there. And they called me and said, Mimi, that was the best thing ever. I didn't even know Columbus did this. So, it is important. And something that I, I've learned with the River Black Chamber of Commerce is Columbus is a Facebook. It's not very, a lot of Twitter or any of the other, I can't even say half of them. But Facebook is, is the main one. So, I would suggest when, and we're all friends on Facebook. I suggest that when you have those competitions, those kind of things, that you tag us, you know, us up here so that we can get it out to our constituents so it could grow more. I found it that, um, Facebook is really great to bring col-, people to Columbus, Georgia with the festival. We do it every year. We send it out to different age groups, different communities, different places. And that's how we get all those different individuals come. So, I just wanted to share that. One more thing she said about scholarship, that's the third time I've heard about it. A lot of people in the community don't know the different programs that will provide scholarship for their children. You might have, uh, a middle-income family, but the way society is today, or even a single mom would love their children to participate. They can pay for them, but they can't get the equipment. Or they get the equipment and they can't pay for them. So, it'd be great if there was, uh, I don't know, maybe in 2025's website or somewhere where someone will create the difference, um, sponsorship that is available for children to be able to participate in these great programs like the STEM program, you know, uh, you know, there's so many programs out there, but a lot of people don't know about them. So, that's it. And I shut up. I'm sorry. I just got excited.
It's all good. I tell you, it does, um, it does my heart good to hear y'all celebrating and lifting up some of the things that are happening in this community. We would not be doing this work if it felt like we were dragging a community along that didn't want to do great things. And one of the exciting things is how much we have invested in ourselves over the past years. And this kayak World Cup and, and World Championship came about because of the upheaval of the pandemic and the opportunity existed. And citizens in our community through uptown Columbus said, well, let's throw Columbus's hat in the ring and see if we can get one of these competitions. And we got two. And you are right, these guys are ready to have it here every year. Although I saw one gentleman from Ireland with his super white skin who learned some really hard lessons about going shirtless in Columbus, Georgia for an entire day. Even though it's October, um, he may have memories that aren't so, aren't so rosy. But everybody else was having a great time. I warned him, go put your clothes on, fella. It is a great thing. And, and we think this is a chance for us to build on those kinds of good things and make even more of them happen. Happy to take any more questions?
Mr. Hugood, do you have a final comment?
I do, Mayor. Um, uh, we will bring back at the next business meeting, which is a fourth Tuesday at five-thirty meeting, options, um, for this partnership, um, to the tune of a million dollars a year for three years. We'll, we'll bring back some options for the mayor and council to consider. And, um, um, I did want to just make it known that we will bring back as you've directed us to. Uh, and then want to thank the minister also because in her prayer today, um, she prayed, uh, for acceptance of change. And I heard a lot of that, uh, come to fruition today around this table. So, thank you, Minister of the Day. That's all I have, Mayor.
Alright. Doesn't appear to be any more questions. Thank you so much for being here and for the presentation. Alright. Next, uh, Columbus Water Works is, uh, going to be walking us through a scheduled rate increase of, uh, a rate study for the, uh, for the waterworks. So, that is Steve here?
Mayor, if I could just, I can make a comment?
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Woodson?
Mayor, thank you for this privilege, point of privilege. I just want to make a comment before, um, we move on to the next update. You know, when, um, when we talk about marketing Columbus, this is exactly what happens when council members or our employees, our staff travel to other communities for training or conferences. This is the key thing. Toya just mentioned a few minutes ago, uh, I mean, a while back, how she would love to enter this into, I guess it was NACO or ACCG. It could also go to GMA that the city manager know. It could be put in different avenues for us to be recognized. I would like us to consider, even though I won't be here, but I would love for us to revisit, uh, council's travel, um, and put some requirements. Um, what if the person is traveling? And I spoke to this with, uh, Mayor Proten about it when we went to the briefing for 2025. If someone is traveling, then this council should need to advise them what they would like to see. That individual should come back, um, not that same week, but the following week with a presentation of what they learned and what they did so that this council can see the value of them participating. Um, Evelyn used to do it all the time. I couldn't afford it. She would go to continue her GMA. She can, um, Bruce, um, would go to ACCG. They could afford it. I couldn't afford to continue my outreach or my out there because I didn't have the funding in my home. And if a council member is going out there to represent our city, then we should be paying their travel. But we can always do, like we tell our kids, I'm going to take you out of school to go on this trip, but you have to do a report back to school. No different. We can do the same thing so that taxpayers can see that their money is really being used and that our council members are there. So, I'm asking, I know I'm not going to be here, but I'm asking Isaiah, our financial, um, department to look at that. I'm asking for Mayor Proten. You and I have been council husband and wife, and we've argued and, and happy and things. I ask for you to please look at our budget and look, because 2025 is saying it. We spend only seven-seven. That's it. Everybody else spends more. What a better way to market our city is for someone to go. Not everybody. If you don't want to go, don't go. But if somebody wants to go, show off our city, tell our story. Allow them to do so and not at their own personal expense. Because when you're, when you're asking someone to represent your city in their own, their own expense, you're putting a hardship to their family too, because it's taking from their family's, um, budget in order for them to represent our city. And I just wanted to take the opportunity because 2025 said how important it is to market our community. Well, what a better place. We pay membership to GMA, NLC, ACC, and NACO. Why can't we have representation, representations that we know? When we're in committees, decisions are made there. And if you don't have your representation, you lose out. Sometimes you're blessed that after action, you might get something. But if you're at the table, your voice is louder than anything. And that's all I wanted to ask. So, Mayor Proten, on my way out, I'm leaving you a task. I don't want to be one of those coming up here to yell at you. Thank you.
Okay. And we, we do not have, I, I don't think the waterworks scheduled today somehow or another got on the agenda and it's not due. Counselor Tucker, did you have something?
I, I just wanted to tell Counselor Woodson, thank you for always considering the good. Um, I am a disabled veteran, so when she mentioned that, I don't get additional funds, so it is a strain. However, when I'm called to do something, um, in reference to next week, I will be in DC representing us here on council. Um, myself and four other county commissioners were picked to speak, um, to cabinet members in reference to how excellent we have done with our Ameri-, American Rescue Plan allocations and also our infrastructure, um, law, and now the, um, Inflation Reduction Act. But that came out of my budget. That came out of Megan Hatcher's, you know, school budget, where I'm going to have to go ask somebody to make donations, you know, for her to play flag football and basketball and other stuff like that. However, when I did receive a phone call, of course, I'm not going to turn it down because that's an, uh, opportunity for me to spotlight Columbus. So, yes, this, this small budget from a retired Air Force member, a hundred percent disabled veteran, I spend my money, um, to represent Columbus Consolidated Government on my own dime with a child that I have to, you know, pay to go to Pacella because I wanted her to have the best education. So, um, but I just thank Mimi because she's always thinking about me.
Alright, thank you. Next, we've got a, uh, audit report on the District Attorney's Office. Ms. Donna McGinnis, if you'd come to the podium. Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning. I'd like to share with you, um, regrets from DA Jackson. He is in, uh, Taylor County this morning, uh, but he does have a representative in the room. Ms. Loby Cooper is here representing her office, and we're delighted to have her. The audit was authorized, uh, back on September twenty-second of 2020. And the process basically included the authorization, the initial authorization of the audit, development of the audit program, an entrance conference with the auditee, which in this case was DA Jackson. I did work with, uh, the acting DA Terry at a point, uh, but ultimately worked with DA Jackson and went on to the conduct of fieldwork. Uh, continuing, uh, there was the preparation of the draft audit report. There was an exit conference with the auditee. We do have in your packages today the auditee's response, and then there was the preparation of the final audit report. In terms of scope, uh, looked at the organizational structure of the office, uh, of the DA relative to the Chattahoochee judicial circuit. Looked at operations, looked at inventory and assessment of vehicles, capital, equipment, and facilities, and also looked at financial position. Now, prior to getting to the recommendations, I wanted to share with you some details about the fieldwork activities and some of the findings when I was ac- actively in the the fieldwork activities and some of the findings when I was actively in the office. The fieldwork was concentrated in payroll, budgetary performance, treasury management, and compliance reporting. The payroll distribution was dated March 11 of 2022, was tested against existing time records and payroll system processing, and there were no discrepancies. I looked at three years of budgetary performance, and in the most recently completed three years, there were budgetary challenges in overtime, mobile phones, printing services, copier charges, conferences, membership dues and fees, office supplies, publications, witness fees, COVID-19 supplies, and operating materials. In a field review of treasury management, it was determined that the asset forfeiture account reconciliation last occurred under the administration of District Attorney John Gray Conger and was last performed by his longtime office manager, Spurgeon Glenn. Since that time until the hiring of Ms. Cooper, who's with us today, she was hired in January 2022. Bank statements had not been reconciled, and the treasury records and related purchasing records were poorly maintained. Annual compliance reporting of asset forfeiture activity to the Prosecuting Attorney's Council was additionally reviewed for accuracy, and it was discovered in the previous six years of reporting, there had been a confirmed 1,231 balance on the reports, but much of the remainder of the reporting was inaccurate when verified against bank-issued statements. I wanted to share with you all that upon the arrival of District Attorney Jackson, there has been a sincere and diligent effort to establish meaningful internal and budgetary control and to restore order to record-keeping in the office. The team is well-positioned to move forward successfully. And pleased to share that with you. It's a new day in that office. The recommendations, as you see above, are to recommend the development of a monthly management flash report that provides updates regarding budget performance, open positions that may exist, caseload progress. That's rather important in that DA Jackson has come into a situation where there is quite a backlog to be addressed. And this flash report would also report treasury management activity, both in the asset forfeiture and food stamp fraud accounts. Additionally, I'd recommend a follow-up on my part at calendar year-end to review the annual compliance report prior to its submission to the Prosecuting Attorney's Council of Georgia. Based upon what we had seen in recent years and the new team that is currently in place, I'm confident that we're going to see a dramatically improved work product. But I feel that it's important on my part to go back and revisit with them prior to the submission of the report. But they are really in a very healthy state today. I'm pleased to share that with you. Loby, would you have anything that you'd like to add? You are a treasurer in the department, I can tell you that. Do we have any questions or anything?
Doesn't appear so.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, ma'am. And I know there was a question from Mayor Protem to the city attorney. Do we need to take action to allow her to go back in at year-end? I think it wouldn't hurt to have it on the record.
Make a motion to that effect.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the internal audit going back calendar year-end, just to double-check, make sure all of the files or forms are filed. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. All right. I think that's it for the mayor's agenda. A little lengthy this morning, but a lot of good information. Mr. Fay?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Look at our business agenda. The first item up is the Old Guard zoning petition. And Counselor Davis has got an amendment that is already put in at Section 2 of the ordinance that's around the table. And on the electronic agenda, you should be able to see it. It ties the development to the site plan dated May 16, 2022, caps the number of apartment units at 196, and any deviation because of subsurface rock or anything else will have to be approved by the city engineer. But the developer is also good with this amendment if Counselor Davis wants to make a motion on that.
All right, motion second. The amendment is stated by the city attorney. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Is there any opposed? All right, Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask Mr. Riley about this project, if we can. Mr. Riley, do you have with you the map that you showed us last meeting?
I do.
Would you?
Is there an auxiliary mic?
Yeah, you can use that.
See this, all right, there, it's working. Yes. Ms. Thomas, one second, let me grab that for you.
Would you orient us again to Veterans Parkway and?
Gladly, yes. Ms. Thomas and counselors, this is Veterans Parkway coming down here on the right. Yes, Veterans Parkway on the right side of your image here. Old Guard Road comes up this way. And then this is American Way right here that comes into Old Guard Road just off of Veterans Parkway.
And you had said that part of the plan is to have retail on Veterans Parkway going into the apartment complex. Is that right?
These two parcels here, shown in white, are going to be, we're looking to zone those as GC, general commercial. So they would be commercial up here on Veterans. This entrance right here comes past the commercial area into the residential. And then you can see also, you can enter and exit the commercial area right here and also here. Did that address your questions, Ms. Thomas?
And is there entrance into the apartment complex from the commercial area?
The only place where the commercial and residents would share an entrance is right here off Veterans. You can enter into the commercial area right here, and then you pass that and go into the residential area there.
And do you recall if there is a left-turn lane on Veterans Parkway? If I'm traveling north and I want to turn into any one of those areas, is there a left-turn lane into any one of those areas, the commercial and/or the apartment?
Trying to see if that's shown on there. I'm not positive off the top of my head. I'm looking.
I drove out there the other day, and that's all still trees, so I couldn't tell exactly where it would go in.
So yeah, I'm not sure if there's, I know it's multi-lane there, whether there's a left-turn lane there. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I could look at the traffic study to see if it's noted there, though.
And if I recall also, Veterans Parkway, all the way down there is, has a concrete median, right? So you can't turn left except at the left-turn entrances. Is that right?
There's no concrete median at that area right there.
Is there a yellow line?
It's divided right there. It splits at the Walgreens south of that.
I'm sorry?
The Veterans Parkway splits south of this intersection at the Walgreens at Moon Road.
So are you saying I could turn left off Veterans Parkway into either the commercial or the apartment without going to a turn lane?
You, no, ma'am. This is the updated map. As far as headed north, you can only turn left across Veterans to get into that development at the apartment complex that's shown. The highway is divided at that location.
So you can't turn into the commercial from Veterans Parkway?
You would enter right here, this is across the low-water apartments, and you'd access this northern parcel here after you're off of Veterans. So I guess to answer your question, you would not enter directly into the commercial off Veterans there. You'd come into this drive and then enter off this drive into the commercial area. And then here, you see it's off Old Guard right here on the southern parcel.
I also noticed on the Traffic Engineers Report, a couple of things that bothered me. One was that you're looking at a 20-pump gas station. Where's that going?
Well, there's no firm plans on the commercial properties just yet as to what's going to go in there. It is, as we mentioned at the last meeting, it's in the Veterans Parkway overlay district, which has some strict requirements as to aesthetics and how it goes, how it sits on the property. So anything that's done there would have to follow that, of course. And the developer wants to make sure it's commensurate with the high-end development of the apartments they're doing there as well.
20 pumps is a big station. And the other, the other thing that I saw in the Traffic Engineers Report that bothered me, the only road that he or she, whoever wrote the report, reported on was Veterans Parkway. Did not do any kind of a traffic study on Old Guard Road. Is that accurate?
I do believe he did discuss Old Guard Road and where American Way, as I mentioned here, comes down here and hits Old Guard and as it goes along here. And, you know, doing that traffic study was a big undertaking cost-wise and work-wise, and it was a bit of a risk. We knew we had a risk running that, but as the traffic study showed, fortunately, all existing intersections, to include everything you see on the map here, stay at the same level of service after the development's put in place. So that was some good news for the development. The only one that showed some negative impact is only at peak hours, and that's across Veterans here, not on Old Guard. But people turning left out of these low-water apartments may see a slight decrease at peak hours. But it said the existing intersections at Old Guard are going to stay at the same level of service.
And Mr. Riley, you told us last time that there would be entrances off Old Guard into the apartment complex for emergency vehicles, that it would be a gated area. Is there just one of those, or is there more than one?
So I believe what you're referring to there, we have two entrances here off of Old Guard. This one here closer to Veterans is the only one that'll actually be used and usable by the residents. This one down here will be gated and locked with the exception of only for emergency vehicles to use that. So you will not have resident traffic using this exit down here. And as we mentioned before, the great pains were taken to look at this traffic and the flow and redirect the main entrance here off of Veterans to keep it off Old Guard.
And I think that this is correct. If not, either you can correct me or maybe even one of the chiefs. When there is an emergency call made to 911, is there a code or something that you enter into at the gate to open the gate for the emergency vehicle to get in? How does the emergency vehicle get in?
There's a number of different ways, but when there's a keypad, I do believe there's an emergency code that they have access to or keys sometimes they can use. There's also just old-school bolt cutters, so they can use those as well.
Well, I could imagine that that would be very easy for the fire truck and the folks at that station. But, you know, suppose they call and 911 sends a sheriff's deputy who's never been out there before. How do they get in?
They certainly still have access at any of these other access points, so they could enter here off Old Guard or Veterans. This is mainly, as you mentioned, for like a fire in the back of the property. They want to make sure they can get access to that.
I will tell you that I still have some real concerns about the school time traffic out there. I was there at 1:15 last week. There were 37 cars in the turn lane waiting to go into North Columbus Elementary School to pick up a kid who got out of school at 2:00. So these folks were there for 45 minutes. And I've been told that by the time school lets out, that line in the turn lane will be all the way out to Veterans Parkway. And that's a real concern to me, to the point where I want to ask our city manager, I would like for us to send whoever from the city is the appropriate person, either the traffic engineer or planning or whomever, to meet with their counterpart at the school district and figure out some way that this is not a hazard. I know that this is not the only school where this kind of thing happens. It happens all over town. And I don't know that we've ever had that conversation with the school district to make sure that whatever is going on, we know we have a plan and that we're looking to fix it. Counselor Davis had said something last time about putting in another lane or something. I don't know if that's the answer. I'm not a traffic engineer. But our folks and the school district folks do know. So I want to make that, Mr. Mayor, a request to have that kind of meeting and study looked at and done so that we don't have, so that I don't have, quite frankly, I don't have concerns about if the fire truck has to go in, has to go past 37 parked cars to get into North Columbus Elementary School. So I know that you and the owner and so forth are doing everything you can to make sure that things come out right. I just want to make double sure that it comes out right and that both our kids at those elementary schools and Northside High School and the residents of that complex and our emergency employees, first responders, are as safe as we can make them. And I think that part of that is to have a real conversation between the city and the school district about these schools all over town, not just this one, but many all over town have the same kind of backup or, you know, waiting. I was telling somebody when I was a kid 100 years ago, you know, we all walked to school. And I walked from Hamilton Road to Jordan High School there and back. Kids don't do that these days. Parents go pick them up, take them to school. And that's okay. I just want to make sure that we're all doing what we need to do to make it a safe way to go. Thank you, Mr. Riley, for your patience and for the information that you've given. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll pull that meeting together. It's been exacerbated by the lack of school bus drivers. Now, everybody's driving their kids, so it's a well-made point. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to say this for the record. And I've had many conversations with a representative of the developer. I share the same concerns about traffic. And, you know, I've thought about this over and over and over, all the development requests out here, and there's just no easy answer the way it is right now. But I do know it's going to take some creativity, and I do know it's going to take some money to do it. I want to add to this development that the, keep in mind that on the Veterans Parkway and American Way, our planning or engineering department, okay, this is just a request for rezoning, but it's got to go through another process. The GDOT is going to come in, they're going to take a look at Veterans Parkway, and they're going to make recommendations to the developer, and the developer's going to have to comply. Our engineering department's going to look at it, and they're going to make recommendations. Our engineering department's gonna look at it, and they're gonna make recommendations also to improvements. There will be improvements, we don't know what they are today, but they're gonna look at it. And they're gonna make recommendations. And the developer has to comply, or it just doesn't get done. That's the bottom line. That's another process, another step out there, but I don't think they're there yet and they haven't looked at it. Uh, there may be some other, uh, requirements that may, um, be on the burden of the developer that he's gonna have to, uh, uh, deal with that cause. But they'll, at the right time, the professionals are gonna look at that. I, I wanna go back to saying that just keep in mind that on all developments, on all developments in our community, the landlord, private property, has the right to have access to their property. Okay? When it fronts a road, they have the right to have access to their property. That's a law, that's legal. The second thing that I, I really wanna highlight on this when I look at it is, I want council to realize that this, i- it's gonna be hard not to, eh, to come up with a way to deny this request. If it's denied, it becomes a legal issue. The city has no, in my opinion, just looking at this, has no stance, no founding grounds to deny this development. It'll go to court, and most likely the developer will win. It would put this city in a position that it would cost a lot of money to defend. It becomes lawyers fighting, and there's really no basis unless somebody can tell me what the basis is being on Veterans Parkway. With all the things that we've done, with the overlay district and everything, um, I, I just don't think you can win that fight. It's just writing a big check to the attorneys and moving on. So, you know, uh, that's something that we did not talk about, that I've thought about many, many times. And, look, the developer's gonna look at everything that's already happened, already happened on American Way and has happened in the area. I, I don't see how you can single them out and say, "You're different from everybody else and you can't do this." For what reason? Because you can make the same argument for all the other developments too. So I just wanted to highlight that on the record, that, you know, this is one of those few, I don't wanna say few exceptions, but when you look at something like this on a major corridor, the legal aspect of it does come into the decision-making. And it's hard for people to understand that. Sometimes it's hard for our constituents to understand that in the area, but it's a fact, and it's a reality. So I did wanna make that point on this one. The, the, the one thing about the overlay district is it allows for, as you can see, more creative entry points, single entry points, large entry points, but internal traffic flow on the property, so we don't get a lot of these curb cuts all over the place. Uh, that's part of the overlay district, and, and we put that in place to do exactly that. So our developments would be a lot more, um, character-friendly to the neighborhood. And certainly you're starting to see a lot of new development that's coming in. It's, uh, you know, the fruits of the labor of this council on good quality, uh, uh, smart development that's going in out there now. And, uh, I don't think I can say anymore about it, but I'll make a motion, Mayor, to, uh, to approve the rezoning.
Okay, we, we have a motion, a second to, um, approve it? We do not? Okay. There's a motion and a second now to approve the overall rezoning. Are there any further discussion? All right, if you would, cue it, and council, you, any votes?
I said, this is as amended.
Oh, as amended.
Right.
Okay. That's approved.
Okay. Get everybody? That does pass?
I think we did.
Hey, thank y'all for, gentlemen, for being here. The, uh, next item, Mayor, is a zoning public hearing. Got something?
All right, yeah, hold on, Council, Council, Tucker?
I, I just wanted to let you know, um, I vote yes for the DA, um, audit, to bring it back in the air.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right?
All right. Next item is a zoning hearing for property at seventy-three hundred Old Moon Road, going from residential office to residential multifamily two. Recommended for approval, uh, Mr. Renfro's here, Mr. George Myers with the developer. Are there any questions around the table on this?
Yes.
All right. Anybody in the audience wanna be heard on this petition at seventy-three hundred Old Moon Road? Don't see any hands on that, Mayor. We will bring this back then in two weeks at the five-thirty PM meeting for a vote. Thank you, Mr. Myers and Mr. Renfro. Mayor, next item up is the first reading of an ordinance. This would amend the, uh, cybersecurity training, um, policy. We have to do it by ordinance, it's two addendum, uh, addenda. Number three is, uh, clarification of governing accounts, logins, and access. And then four is cybersecurity training, which all employees are required to do on their computer. And, um, it's actually fairly easy to go through. We can say that after having done it. But any questions around the table? I guess IT is in the back if we need them.
Doesn't appear to be any questions.
All right. We'll vote on that in two weeks. The next ordinance, this would impose a moratorium on certain mandatory promotional procedures for the police department and the fire and EMS department until the earlier of the implementation date of the pay plan, or January thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three. This is requested by our chiefs to try to be consistent and not have anybody caught, with the pay plan initiation at a lower salary. We will vote on that in two weeks.
Any questions regarding that?
Okay. Next item is the, requested by our superior court judges, a couple of them. This is involving superior court judges who bring in folks for ra- court reporters for rapid resolution and other one-time hearings. This would amend the ordinance that you passed several years ago to exempt these temporary court reporters, rapid resolution from other areas from the licensing requirements in Columbus, just as an exception. And that was requested by our judges, uh, particularly Judge Peters and Richardson, who met with the city staff.
Ca- Council Davis?
I- is this just what I hear you saying, is they're asking to go back to the old way of doing it?
No, this is just for folks coming in from other counties to work different courts for a senior superior court visiting judge or superior court out-of-county judge where there's a conflict. And the rapid resolution program also has these court reporters that come in and out, and we're trying to get an exception for them on the business license requirement. Our, this is different from the full-time employee court reporters that we have. These are just one-time, uh, hearings or transcripts that they're working on.
The ci- city manager has a comment.
City manager wanna add on there?
Well, um, of course, we, uh, met with the judges, mayor, myself, and finance director and others. And, and I can tell you, this has been an issue for some time now. Last year, year before, uh, they'd have a court reporter, uh, they need to come from Macon to, um, handle a, a hearing. And of course, uh, our people are very efficient, and we don't do like many other communities in a lot of cases. They go to other communities, and they don't ask them for, um, a business license to come and do a job that the judge needs them to do in their city. But when they come to Columbus, even if it's gonna be for one occasion, we ask, "Where's your business license?" And they like, "I don't have a business license, and I'm just coming for this one case." And we're like, "Well, you can't do it in Columbus, Georgia without a business license." Well, they need to move that case forward, and they're not requiring it in some other cities. And I'm not trying to be like other cities, but we need to be efficient and be able to move cases along. And so, uh, when the judges explained it, I fully support the request of the judges. Uh, I think, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you give them a W-NAN and let them go on their way, you know? And, um, and let them do the court reporting and move the business of the court along. And so I fully endorse support what the judges have requested. I think it will, uh, help move things along in Columbus, Georgia.
Council Grab?
Thank you. So are we requiring business licenses for the recorders that work for the? So who has to have a business license now?
Well, if you work for the judge, obviously you don't have to have a business license. This would be, they need, you know, they've got conflict cases a lot.
So anybody coming in from out of town?
And it doesn't.
But nobody locally needs to have, be, to have a business license?
Uh, if they're locally and they conduct the business like the guy that's over at Recorder's Court, he's conducting business, he has a business license.
Okay.
You know, and they bring in court reporters and they do business. But this is someone, if you, they're short on court reporters, and they are, and someone says out of Augusta, court reporter, "Yeah, I'll come and do it." And they're getting paid to do it. We asked them for a business license, and they're like, "I don't have a business license. I'm not going to get a business license, just come and do a court report job for once." And, and what I'm accustomed to and is, you know, they can do a W-NAN. You know how that works.
Yes.
Give them W-NAN, let them go and do the job and go on their way.
W-NAN or a ten ninety-nine?
Well.
Cause they're independent contractors.
They're ten ninety-nine.
Ten ninety-nine, whatever, yeah, W-NAN, ten ninety-nine. And let them go on their way, and they are responsible for reporting the income because we're gonna report.
Right.
So, I'm not.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering, do we wanna do it for just this small group? Or do we wanna look at maybe just rescinding that whole licensing, um, procedures?
I, I don't know. I think this is the better way to do it, uh, that yield to city attorney. What, what I just wanna make sure is that we can be efficient and move things along. However we do it.
I think some of our current employees have it because they do other transcriptions that are reported as income, and they have their licenses for that. But I mean, you, I mean, that's a, it's a bigger policy call if you wanna exempt everybody, I don't.
I'm just wondering if we change it to license, license preferred instead of required? And then that opens it up for, you know, more people, you know, so the judges have a bigger pool to choose from.
Well, I think, I think that, um, if they work for, for one of the judges, they're an employee, and they, it's not necessary. So I, I think the judges are well-aware of the fact that if there is any impediment to them being able to get cases moved through, we're willing to take a look at it. But at this point, just the, the business licenses required for special recorders that are coming from out of town on, on certain circumstances, to include some of the rapid resolution issues, it was a real problem.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I just, I, instead of just taking a small bite out of a problem, I, you know, I'd rather just.
Yeah, but I think, I think, I think that would warrant a little more discussion.
Okay.
With, with both the judges and, of course, with council, to make sure that it's achieving what we wanna achieve. You kinda hate to carve out one business and tell them that, you know, if they are in business for themselves, they're exempt from being licensed when other areas are not.
Well, and, and Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm out of order.
That's all right. Let me, we got Council Thomas.
You may not be, you may not know the answer to this question, but, uh, do we, is typically, uh, the person who comes in to do it, they don't ever come back? They're different court reporters every time?
They, they may or may not come back with, you know, some, the one that I was on a conference call with, I guess, a year or so ago, I'm sure they don't deal with us anymore because he required a business license. And we were on a three-way, four-way conference call, and they're like, "I'm not getting a business license, come over there and do work." And so they, but if they come once, they may, the judge may say, "I like that reporter." And they need one, they call, and they come back again. You know?
Well, I guess my, my point is, if they come back on any kind of a regular basis, you know, say, four times a year, then they have to have a business license when they come back the fourth time. I, I don't know. But if they, um, if, if it's somebody who just comes, you know, once or twice a year, uh, I'm, I'm pretty good with them not having to have a business license. But if, if they come on a regular basis,
Yeah.
then we need to take a look at that, I think, to see if there is, um, something that we need to do in the business license area.
Yeah, and I think that's reasonable if they are gonna repetitive, just keep coming back. But.
Well, the, the way this is written, it'll exempt them if they're coming from outside Columbus with, with a visiting judge.
Yeah, and, and.
With a visiting judge?
Or for the rapid resolution to try to move cases.
Because if I remember correctly, the one that we were dealing with came with a visiting judge who was trying the case because of a conflict maybe over here, and we're like, "We'll pay you after you send us your business license." I'm like, yeah, uh, and so.
Well, this is not something that I want to stop this, uh, uh, ordinance on, but I just put it in the back of your mind and think about it, see if we need to do something
Yeah.
for repetitiveness.
And, and what I was gonna s- but yeah, that's the concern.
Thank you.
Council Davis?
Well, I, I wanna make sure we're talking apples and apples and oranges and oranges, and not opposite. I think what's being communicated is that the city is requiring this, and without it, they can't come into town. But what, what I heard the city attorney just say is that we're changing it no matter how many times they come in town, if they're coming from out of town. But I just wanna, I, and I don't, look, I don't have a problem with exit. The judges are, the, 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 I, I guess the goal here is to expedite cases. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that at all, but if I remember back correctly, the staff brought all this to us, eh, with the recommendation that we approve it. And the way we approved it was that you have to present a business license. So it's not that our city is saying you gotta get a business license here, you just have to show proof of it. I believe that's the way I remember how it was, which whether if you're in from, because the problem was from, if you're doing setup business in Gwinnett or somewhere Atlanta or other places, you're running a business, you ought to be able to produce a business license. And we're okay if you produce it from your county. If not, and you don't have one, then you need to get one in Columbus. I think that's what I remember.
That is true.
But what I'm hearing is we're changing that now completely. It's, it's not a, uh, it's not for a one or two time, it's for anybody from the outside coming in, we're exempting. So we're actually going back and changing the policy that was recommended to us by the executive management. So I wanna make sure that the communication is accurate here.
This is only for independent contractors, court reporters hired by a sitting judge or a visiting judge, but they're from outside Columbus, coming to do rapid resolution hearing or any other special setting.
And, and I, I.
Well, and I would have a, I would have a question of why we would do different for our local people.
And, and that's.
What makes them different from the people coming outside if they have.
Well, our local people, I think, city attorney, unless they, I mean, if you've got someone, um, who, whose business is traveling court reporter, they're gonna have a license. And, I mean, in some county, somewhere. But these are people, as I understand it, who typically, um, you know, if a judge has a court, needs a court reporter, city attorney, help me, uh, and, in this case with the, I remember a Macon, Georgia case, you know, where the court, the judge was over here from Macon, and they were gonna bring the court reporter, and we wanted a business license.
I'm sorry, this would allow an exception.
And this would be an exception, and the person. And the person who's not in the business of being a traveling court reporter, they wanted them to come and, you know, you're my court reporter that I use in Macon, would you come and do the court reporting? And we're asking for a business license or we're not gonna pay you.
Well, here's what I'm saying, I understand how this works. But i- if, we're changing the policy and I don't, you know, if we're expediting cases, it's fine. But, you know, I'm questioning why we went through this in the first place. And it was a recommendation to do it in the first place. There had to be a solid reason, which we just asked for proof, okay? So if we wanna change it, let's just change it, go back to the old way of doing it. And I don't, I have a problem with that, whether we have that conversation today or tomorrow, is okay with, is okay with me if we're trying to expedite cases. But I, I don't think that that argument from the past is relevant anymore. Where does it lie today? I guess it's just not an issue anymore.
Well, I see it as, uh, before COVID, I didn't, I've never encountered this kind of discussion, you know, regarding a court reporter coming from somewhere else. And maybe we're just short all over the place, and not just CBL drivers and police, but court reporters too, and the courts have gotten backed up as a result. And, and so, um, I, we even went to the extent, we had our people to call the contracted court reporter in Recorder's Court and say, can you take on this extra stuff? And can you hire some court reporters? And the response was, no. And the response was, oh, by the way, the $200 that you pay court reporters, you're not getting ready to hire anybody. I mean, that's the response they got last week.
Well, look, I understood, you know, we all went through COVID and all. So, uh, again, if we're trying to expedite, expedite cases, that's fine. But if we're gonna change this, let's just go back to, if you're changing it, you need to make it across the board the way it used to be. And, and that would be, I would, if you wanna make it fair, just and equal, it'd be the same for everybody, whether it's here in this county or another county, uh, to be exempt.
Well, and, you know, it may not, the problem may not last forever. But I was shocked last week at the response we got back. You're trying to give a private court reporting business more business? And they says, I can't get court reporters? And, and then let you know that what you're paying is not gonna pay. That's, that's, that's the response we got last week.
Yeah, and I, I, I remember this, it's all coming back now. There were, there were actually people that were doing business, just kind of looked at us and just said, well, forget about you. I'm not gonna do business. We, again, if you change the rules, there were one or two that was like that and we just said, okay.
Yeah.
That's fine, you know, you lose out on the business. But, uh, like I'm saying, I mean, we're, we're, we're really changing the whole thing and going back to the way it used to be. So I just wanna make sure we're talking oranges to oranges, apples to apples.
Sure.
Not the way it's being communicated that because we require a business license, they're not coming here. That's not so.
Well, look, I, I can just tell you what I've dealt with. I was on the, on a conference call with the mayor and, and chief judge and other judges and everybody trying to resolve a business license court reporter situation. I'm okay.
Yeah, and at, at this time, the judges have not asked for blanket exemption for the folks who work here full-time. They just asked for the visiting judges to be accepted. And that's what we have written here. If y'all wanna consider the other and maybe change that policy too, you can. But you don't need to do it right this minute.
Yeah, I think it, I think it deserves a little more, more discussion and, uh.
Well.
This is what they've asked for at this time.
All right.
Okay, well, this is just on first reading. We will take a vote in two weeks on it. Um, the item six, on my agenda, I'm gonna call over Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge. Uh, and we may have, we're gonna have comments from her and then we may have some questions or a possible delay. But I know Ms. Hodge wants to comment on the entertainment district proposal. Thank, Ms. Hodge.
Uh, good morning, Mayor and Counsel. Um, this is in response to a request from, uh, Mr. Darby that was here on the public agenda, uh, from Pedal Pub and also from Counselor Woodson to bring forward, um, an ordinance to allow Pedal Pub to have alcohol on the Pedal Pub as they're giving their tours in the Uptown area. And we did meet internally and our recommendation coming back is to establish an entertainment district, um, for the Pedal Pub to operate. Um, and so that is what we're bringing forward. I've had a brief conversation with Ed Wolverton in Uptown about this. This is something that we have been discussing, uh, with them from about 2018. Um, and it was kind of pulled off the table. But as we met internally with, uh, the Police Department and the City Attorney's Office, the Finance Department and the City Manager's Office, this is our recommendation on how to allow this particular business to operate in the Uptown area and to have alcohol on the Pedal Pub. And so what we have brought forward today is response to that request from Counselor Woodson, which is an ordinance, uh, to amend, uh, Chapter Three to allow for a, what we're calling a tour service vehicle and also to establish a particular boundary for the Uptown area as an entertainment district. We ha- have had requests from other areas to establish this same sort of district that there would be a open container basically within a particular boundary. And so this would allow, um, Counsel to establish additional districts in addition to the one that we're, um, proposing today. And I know there's been some discussions. We would like to have a public meeting with the merchants in Uptown. Uh, I spoke with Counselor Woodson yesterday about that. So a request to delay this, um, I believe will be coming so that we can have a public meeting to discuss with Uptown. Uh, we don't want them to think we're trying to, you know, sneak this one in. But we did want to respond to Counselor Woodson and her request, and this is our recommendation for that. I will walk through this briefly on what's in the ordinance and just to provide the boundaries that we're recommending, uh, from the Police Department, uh, the Finance Department and the City Attorney's Office. Uh, we have established a tour service vehicle. So this does not allow anyone to have an open container in this particular boundary. It's not for privately owned golf carts. It is specifically for what we're calling a tour service vehicle. And this is mirrored after what is done in Savannah. And it would be a business that is licensed in Columbus, Georgia, which is in the business for carrying passengers for hire or offering to carry passengers for hire through any part of the entertainment district. Uh, their purpose of this vehicle is not transportation, but for touring and sightseeing. So we have added, uh, this definition in the ordinance. Also, the entertainment district that's established is an outdoor consumption of alcohol. It's similar to what, um, Uptown does on the weekends when they have a concert. Um, and there would be parameters, uh, set around that entertainment district. It is a licensed district that can provide alcohol in an approved container basically for carryout, for you to walk around within the boundaries of the district. It's limited to one 16-ounce shatterproof container. Consumption is limited to the boundaries of the entertainment district. Hours would be from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And then it also defines the boundaries of what we're calling the Uptown Entertainment District. The boundaries is basically 14th Street to 9th Street from Broadway over to Bay. Does not include the Riverwalk, does not include the pedestrian bridge, does not include Dillingham. It is the entertainment district for Uptown. We do see that this district could expand over time. This is kind of a trial run for Columbus as far as an entertainment district goes. Uh, we have had two other requests, uh, for this same type of, uh, entertainment district. So this does provide that mechanism to do that. And again, that's 14th Street down to 9th Street, basically from Broadway over to Bay. And so it would allow, uh, the Pedal Pub to operate within that district and allow individuals to bring this open container, this, uh, special cup, whether it's a sticker or a specialty cup. Uh, that would be at the decision of Uptown, how that would operate. Uh, and again, we wanna have a public meeting to get input from the business owners and the residents of Uptown on, uh, their support of this ordinance and to hear their comments. So I have, uh, emailed Ed yesterday. We're trying to set up a date, uh, so that we can, um, have that meeting before the next council meeting, which would be on the 25th.
Okay, Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. Um, can you go back to the mound?
Yes, ma'am.
It seems like we're leaving out some of the players by not including First Avenue. Like, um, like along 12th Street, there's quite a few restaurants going even, even past First Street. You know, between Broadway and Second Avenue on 12th Street, there's several restaurants there. And then Chris Woodruff has invested quite a bit of money in Highside Market, which is 13th between First and Second. It seems like that should be included in the entertainment district.
So the way we envision and our understanding of what Chris Woodruff wants for Highside Market is for that to be its own entertainment district, for them to be able to, um, stay within the boundaries of Highside Market and not carry from Highside Market into Uptown. That is our understanding and I believe Counselor Woodson has had conversations with him as well. So that is one of the ones that, that we know is interested in this similar entertainment district for the boundaries of Highside Market.
Mid-city yards as well.
Absolutely.
And you also have mid-city. I want it. So it's all based on this.
All right.
So is there anything we can do for the, for the establishments along 12th? And then also there's Salt Cellar, but I guess they can go out the back door. It's just, there's a few, few businesses that are, are gonna be left out.
Well, and I think the way this is structured is that as we go along, there may be a case for another half a block or another, you know, front, road frontage to be added. This is not a done deal, this is, that's, that's finished. But the idea is to be adaptable so that when they see the demand build up in other areas, they can use it. Is that all, Counselor Crabbe?
Yeah, that's.
Thank you. Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this only deals with alcohol, not with music or any kind of other outside activities, right?
That's correct, this is only.
Doesn't change any other regulations, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and if, if someone else, as we've already been talking, uh, wants to have their own entertainment district, would they apply to you and then come to us for approval?
Yes, so it would be, um, an- another section in the ordinance that established whatever we wanna name, Highside Market Entertainment District, and the boundaries would be set. That is a mechanism that we can, um, add to this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Cause we have had two other requests that I'm aware of, now three, as the mayor mentioned, one more.
All right. Counselor Thomas?
Um, a- at this point, there's only one business that has asked us to, um, who, who will be operating in this district. Is that correct?
There's only, um, the Pedal Pub that would, um, and let me say that when we had our internal discussion and I know the police chief is here and he might wanna speak to this, the concern was allowing alcohol on this Pedal Pub as it's moving through the streets and what we're calling this entertainment district. But you can't walk on the sidewalk with the same container. And so that was why our recommendation is not only the Pedal Pub, but for those walking in the district could also have this container. So this is the business that would fall under the tourist service vehicle for this district.
I guess one of my, my questions would be, uh, you know, where am I gonna get on this Pedal Pub? Uh, you, in all of the other streets, cross streets, you have, you showed that the, that the district crosses, but the 13th Street, right at the end of the bridge, it, it doesn't cross, is that?
Goes under.
Oh, it goes under, right there.
It goes under?
On front, yes, ma'am, it goes under the 13th Street Bridge.
Okay, I just wanna make, make sure you don't have to get off and whatever. There, um, one of the concerns that I have heard is, um, there have been in other cities, uh, a lot of accidents with the, uh, Pedal Pub type, uh, vehicle. Um, and I know on, um, uh, First Avenue to Bay, uh, there's a fairly steep, um, hill, if you will, at, on several places throughout there. And I'm, I'm concerned about some of the, um, uh, safety precautions, uh, about, as, as they travel around that district. Uh, it's just really, um, you know, it, backing up is not gonna be easy, going up those hills.
And it could be that his, um, route doesn't go down First Avenue at Bay. It goes down 12th Street over to Bay and then comes back up 10th Street. He might, from a business perspective, avoid that particular incline. But it doesn't, this entertainment district includes the Pedal Pub to operate, but it also allows, um, individuals to walk in this area as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Counselor Woodson?
Yes, I just wanted to, um, let Counselor Crabbe know and, and House, anyone else. I've been talking to Chris Woodruff, he's familiar with this, what we're doing here. Matter of fact, he called me from Africa, um, yesterday to, to talk about it because he doesn't want people to go from up, from Highside to, um, Uptown, holding a drink through all the streets. He doesn't want that. He wants the entertainment district so then later he can come back and request an entertainment district. As, um, as Pam stated, we just don't wanna name everybody. But as Pam stated, there is another business, now one that Skip has mentioned. So there's two that are all waiting to see what we're going to do with this entertainment district. Um, I think, I think it's a good idea cause Uptown has always been considered entertainment district anyway. Why we have the, um, parades down Uptown? We have the, the walking, um, trails for, uh, Alzheimer's. We have, um, the bikes, um, we have concerts in the evening. Uh, people, uh, sign up to use both of the concrete stages and the, um, gazebos there to do events. So this is just finishing up what we started with Uptown years ago by making it an entertainment district. And I appreciate staff being so quickly in, adhering to my request. But one little thing is we need to go to the citizens before we vote. So I'm going to ask for this to be delayed so we can go to the citizens and the citizens can have input. Um, I have talked to the two people that I'm working with, which is the Pedal Pub and Chris Woodruff, and they both said it's fine with them, just as long as we can get the district, entertainment district in place. So it's not like, uh, we gotta do this today. Questions and answers will be answered in the next, what, two weeks or so. Thank you.
Is two weeks enough on that? Okay. All right.
All right, Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we need to do anything to facilitate being able to cross the bridge with the Pedal Pub? Or is the Pedal Pub not gonna do that?
At this time, we're not recommending to have this entertainment district cross a bridge.
Yeah.
The, what's outlined in yellow would, is what our recommendation is and what the Police Department felt comfortable with as far as where open containers would be allowed.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I believe that's all the questions.
All right, appreciate that, Ms. Hodge. We'll bring that back then for more discussion on first reading in two weeks. Uh, Mayor, we have one request. Hopefully we won't bump up against the Brady's first pitch, but we're doing it in the executive session on personnel and litigation.
Okay. Now, hang on, Counselor, uh, Woodson?
I wanted, I wanted to ask and I forgot, since we have it on first reading and I'm delaying it. Um, Pedal Pelt is here. I wanted him to come and answer Counselor Thomas's question and concern. I wanted him to address it. Since we're on first reading, please give your name and address.
Antoine Darby, 7350 Solomon Road. So, one of the things that Pedal Pub as an institution has done since the incident occurred in Atlanta is reviewed its safety policies. And so, in our training of pilots, all of our pilots are now trained to make only right turns. And so the area you're referring to does have a pretty steep incline. Our pilots are trained to make that right turn before approaching that incline, and then they would go down that hill. The same would be the case going up there. We've also placed a governor on the Pedal Pub, and so at a maximum speed, it's 11 miles per hour. In the past, that has been a little bit more than what the current vehicles allow. And so we have a governor in place as well as training for our pilots on lines of safety, of how to approach areas where there's a, a steep incline.
And again, how many accidents have this company?
Yeah, so there's been one, what I would call a major accident in Atlanta. There've been some other accidents where some cars have gotten too close to Pedal Pubs and bumped them, but there's been one accident that I'm aware of where there's been an incident where people were.
I just wanted you to clarify that because it sounded like there were lots and lots, and there isn't that many.
One that I'm aware of in Atlanta.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, they'll be back for further public hearing in two weeks.
All right, and we will make a note of the executive session once we complete the clerk's agenda.
That's all, Mayor.
All right. All right, we'll move to the public agenda. We have one individual registered today, Mr. Hales, thank you for your patience. If you would, you can come to the podium and start by giving your name and your address, and if you hit five minutes, I'll try to signal you with about a minute to go.
No problem.
If you can't finish in five, we'll let you come back for another three.
We can do that. My name is Wayne Hales, I live at 1705 Mazer Drive here in Columbus, Georgia. I'm here on behalf of the Columbus Branch NAACP, and with me today is Tracy Mosley, he is also the president and CEO of the Urban League of Greater Columbus. As I sat back, I was listening to the 2025 project of all the growth they're talking about coming in this city, and that's exciting. I also listened to the District Attorney's Audit Report and talked about the caseloads that they're having, that they have. And that's a little bit why we're here today. We're here talking about the, the concerns and challenges of the multiple county circuit design of the current Chattahoochee Judicial Circuit. According to the state law as to the creation of judicial circuits, the statute sets forth no standards, no guidelines, or any criteria as to the composition of a single member circuit. With that being the case, the NAACP looked for the common good thread in the current designated single county circuits. And the only common thread we could find, or we could discern, was that they all met a citizenry population of 80,000 or greater. As Georgia's 10th largest populated county, according to the latest census of 206,922 citizens, we question why there are seven counties, Paulding, Houston, Columbia, Douglas, Floyd, Rockdale, and Doherty, with populations far below ours that serve as single judicial circuits. As according to, as we heard from the District Attorney's Office, as far back as 2013, our Muskogee County District Attorneys, as they met with us, have voiced their concern about the overwhelming number of cases each Assistant District Attorney has. Generally, it's about 250 cases per year, but the ideal caseload is 200. And imagine if you're the victim of a burglary, your house has been broken into, perhaps you're at home, and, and you're one of those 250 new cases every year that one Assistant District Attorney is trying to manage. We believe that it is a flagrant denial of equal protection provisions of both the United States Constitution and the Constitution of Georgia to deny the citizens of Muskogee County the full weight of their vote through this prohibitive arbitrary scheme. Finally, the growing population, as we've heard, of color has been the case since 2009. According to the latest census, the demographic makeup of Muskogee County is 49% black, 37% white, 8% Hispanic, and 3% other. However, in the past 42 years, there have only been three people of color to serve as Superior Court Judges, the Honorable Albert Thompson, John D. Allen, and recently appointed Ben Richardson. In addition, there are currently no individuals of color who serve as juvenile court judges. It is our contention that the current six-county Chattahoochee Judicial Circuit, intentional or not, is designed to dilute the black and brown voting strength. So we are here today asking that the Columbus City Council request that the locally elected delegation introduce legislation to make Muskogee County a single county judicial circuit when their session begins in January. That is our request, and that's why we're here today.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. Any, any questions of Mr. Hales? Counselor Tucker?
Thank you so much, President Hales. I did get the request, I can't remember what date it was, but as of right now, it is on the agenda, but we have to vote on it, right? Is that right? So, but it is listed as a agenda item, and I know, I can't remember the exact date, but I think you all had a meeting. Was it like?
We've had, we've had a meeting like a year ago that we've talked with him, and I've had conversations with Judge Gil McBride and some of the legislative delegation. So, and that was about a year ago. And Judge McBride said he's willing to sit and talk with us about that.
So I did want to make note that we did, you know, add it. However, it has to go for a vote.
We understand.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Woodson?
Thank you very much. I too received it and I forwarded, and it is honored, but one other thing, you said you have spoken to Judge McBride, and I would say today's presentation, what you sent, I would say, I would ask you to send it to, to all council members, because there are some council members that are not here. And if anybody has any concerns, then they'll be able to reply back to you or whoever needs to be replied to, to have their questions answered, so that when we take a vote, everyone can vote with a free conscience of knowing that they understand what the request is.
Okay. That's, no other questions, Ms. Hales, just thank you.
Thank you.
First, thank you too, sir, for being here. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First on my agenda, I've got the 2023 Legislative Agenda, and there are 12 items on the agenda, on the agenda, and I am going to go through each of those legislative agenda items. And as you have indicated to some of the council members, we typically vote on each and every item. And each item is recommended or requested by a particular council or staff. And the first item.
Excuse me, Mr. City Manager, before we get started, Counselor Thomas?
I, I do want to voice a concern that I have. We were provided this list of the Legislative Agenda on Friday in the agenda mailing after office hours. Office hours, offices were closed yesterday for the holiday. There's been little or no discussion amongst the counselors of this, of these items. Some of them, I think, are fairly easy to resolve, some of them, I think, are going to take some time to, to talk about. Counselor Woodson just said to send it to these absent counselors so that if they had questions, they could be answered. We're gonna vote today, and they will not be able to vote, they won't be here. I'm concerned that this was, this was put on the agenda, and the meeting with the alert, with the state delegation was scheduled in a week's time, that doesn't give us much, that doesn't give us any time to talk to our constituents about this and to talk to folks about, what do you think? Do you think it needs to be tweaked? Do you think it's good? Do you think it's bad? And I'm, I'm, I'm just really want to let you know that I am very aggravated, if you will, that this timeline seems to be in a hurry. And we, I do not recall, perhaps I am losing it, but I do not recall being asked about the availability, my availability for a meeting with the delegation next Wednesday. And I have looked and looked to see what time next Wednesday, and I don't see that anywhere. So I, I just want you to know that the lack of information that we have, that council has been given is a great deal of concern to me.
Sure, and let me just say that, and she's looking for the date that we first announced, and we've been emailing and asking council members and staff for legislative agenda items.
The legislative agenda items is not the issue.
Well, and I hear you. If I may finish, she is going to get me the date that we announced to you, the, the meeting with the delegation. She's looking for that, and we will share that with you. And so, it is not unusual that at the last hour, and even after this meeting date we've set with council members in the past, even if you have a legislative agenda item after you vote today, up until the legislative session and even during the legislative session, if you have an agenda item, you can bring it and we will forward it to them, and it still gets considered. So there is no cutoff for submitting legislative agenda items. In the past two years, we've been at this table, and, and I know a council member has added 10 items at the table from previous years. This happens two years in a row. And so, you know, there is no cutoff. You can vote today, you can delay if you want to, and we can have the Legislative Agenda Meeting Hometown Connection with the legislators. If you want to come back in a week or two and consider agenda items that you don't consider today, that's your prerogative. And then if you don't have some then, and one pops up at Christmas time, and you want to do a legislative agenda item, as we've done in previous years, you can add that item. And we, Madam Clerk, you've sent them to the Legislative Delegation in December and January, and, and even we've had some during the time they were in session. So there is, if you don't want, if you haven't had enough time and you want to delay one, delay it, and then come back.
And another concern too, though, is the fact that we don't have the full council here, because I know in the past, the delegation will tell us, you know, if you've got a 7, 6, 4 vote on an item, or even a 7, 3 vote, they don't get behind it and push it, because they're not gonna expend their political capital if, if this body is not together. So, to the, to the point that the city manager was making, I think that if there's anything, that there's any question, I would pull it and, and not just err on the side of pushing it forward. And then we can get together at a later date, and, and we can tell them, because really the, the, the Hometown Connection, the real value there is to get them all in one room and tell them about our finances, tell them about our, our community and the things that are happening. To me, the, the legislation that we recommend, because it continues to get forwarded to them, I've sent them stuff, and that's something that we can do, because you're, you're right, it's, it's a quick turnaround, and I'm not sure how we let it sneak up on us, but my recommendation would be just for any council that has any issue, any question, even a little nagging bug in the back of their mind, just pull it for this time, and then we'll reconsider it as we move forward.
And, and Mr. Mayor, you know, the first email to the members of council and department heads went out on Thursday, August 18th, at 10:25 a.m., and it's to each of you. And it tells you that we want agenda items, basically this is no later than Friday, September 30th. And of course, as we've said in the past, we never stop accepting agenda, legislative agenda items. And it says in here, the last sentence says, "The 15th Annual Hometown Connection Legislative Meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 19th." That was sent out on the 18th of August. Pardon? The, the, it's at the Trade Center, it's always at the Trade Center, and it's normally 11, 11:30.
It's 11:30 at the Trade Center.
So, you know, so the options today, as we present the legislative agenda items, you can vote on the item, you can delay the item and ask us to bring it back sometime after Hometown Connection, and then remember, you can add items anytime you get ready. You know, from this day until the legislative session ends, probably next April of 2023, you can add an item. We added an item during the Legislative Agenda Session last year, I think, about the government center site location. We added that probably in February. We do it all the time. So with that, I will proceed through the agenda items, and if you want to vote on it, you, you certainly can. If you want to delay it, as you delay other things, you can delay it, and we will bring it back. And that's where we are this morning.
Anything else, Counselor?
I better not.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I just want to sympathize with Counselor Thomas's comments, and I understand, I, I understand, you know, everybody's thoughts on this. The, I just want to tell you, the, you know, I had to travel over the weekend, and I really didn't get a chance to even look at this until Monday, and, which was yesterday, and, and I do really, I like to deliberate on things, I like to think through them, I like to take my time, it doesn't always happen here, that's why at the table sometimes we're forced to do it right here. It becomes long, lengthy, and challenging, but you know, it is what it is, if that's how everybody wants to do it. But I do like to really work through these things, and that's okay. If I, if I feel uncomfortable about it, I just vote no. I mean, I'm not gonna support it. And I, I plan on doing that, because a lot of this stuff I've just heard about in less than 24 hours. Not a lot, a couple things. And there's no way I'm gonna support anything like that without being able to, to work through it. And a lot of these things are just not, to me, I mean, I don't, I, I didn't know they were ever a problem, at least it's not being communicated to me, or I'm hearing it out in the community, so I mean, I, I, I really don't understand it to its fullest extent. I'm not gonna support something like that. And so however we move forward today is fine with, I guess, fine with me, but just keep in mind that that's how I'm gonna, you know, how, how I'm gonna react to the action I'll take on these requests.
I, I, I certainly understand, and, you know, whether it's now or later or never, I mean, that's, that's up to this council.
Well, let's go through them, and then we can see which way, I mean, we can delay them, pull them, we can do whatever council's comfortable doing.
So, the first one has to do with housing affordability, requesting the delegation introduce an amendment to set statewide legislation to allow cities and counties to enact localized anti-displacement policies for properties in qualified census tracts and difficult development areas, economically depressed zones, as defined by the general law of the General Assembly. And this came from Counselor Toya Tucker. And, and, and under explanation, it just says, "The pain of rising rents and the associated financial insecurity disproportionately affects single families, single parents, individuals, and those with disabilities, older adults, and people with multiple or interesting identities." And if this is one you choose to vote on today, or you can delay it. And, um, if this is one you choose to vote on today, or you can delay it, um, that's your prerogative.
I don't, I don't get a vote, but I will tell you that this is one I think ought to be delayed for more conversation, simply because I, coming from a real estate background, like, it makes me very nervous to place a rent control option, uh, in somewhere. I understand that it can be a very positive thing, but I think we just need to hash that out a little bit more. So that, I don't get a vote, but that would be, I just wanted to make that comment.
I mean, I make the motion that we delay this one.
All right, there's a, there's a motion and a second to delay this item for future consideration. Uh, any co- any conversation associated with it? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
All opposed?
Two.
Okay, that will be delayed.
So, uh, the next one is, uh, short-term rentals, um, and, um, from, uh, Counselor Woodson and, uh, Counselor Tucker, uh, requesting the delegation support the GMA policy position on short-term rentals, uh, support local control of regu- of the regulation of short-term rentals as necessary for quality of life, public safety, and a competitive lodging, lodging marketplace. Uh, and, uh, and, um, and so, um, comes from, uh, these two counselors, and if either or both want to elaborate, but parking noise in party houses can be recurring issues with short-term rental properties in unregulated environments. And they are basically asking to support, uh, local control, um, support the GMA policy position on short-term rentals.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. This, uh, excuse me. This, uh, I think we talked about last week, has become more evident, and, and just, it's not just in the uptown area, it's going across the, the city. Uh, I had a chance to speak with a couple of our legislators, uh, of our delegation last week, and both of them agreed that the regulation of the Airbnb's, this industry should be at the local level. And so I think they're, they're ready to take something like this up. Uh, so I, they're ready to take something like this up. Uh, they agreed that it should be regulated at the local level. So, uh, I totally support this, and I think, I, I would like to see us move forward with it, but...
Motion second to approve, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, that, that's... All right, there's a motion and a second to pull item three, which is the, uh, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem compensation. Uh, any discussion? All in favor to delay, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that, that'll be delayed.
Okay, uh, item four is a musical production state sales tax credit, uh, from, uh, Mayor Protem Allen, um, requesting, uh, the delegation introduce legislation to expand certain state sales tax credits for production companies producing music or musical theater productions to make it more feasible for production companies to take advantage of these credits, uh, in Georgia, uh, from the Mayor Protem.
All right, there's a motion and a second to, for item four. Uh, any further consideration? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Okay, item five, uh, designation of Muskogee County as a single-county judicial circuit.
All right, there's a motion and a second to, uh, is that to delay for further consideration? Uh, item five, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this is to delay.
Oh, to delay.
Okay.
No, 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 we, we need to take a hand vote, so all in favor of delaying...
Wait, to delay is because we're going to come back and talk about it?
Yes.
I didn't understand, even with the first one, I didn't understand.
So, what I show, Mayor, is number one was delayed, number three was delayed, and now number five delayed.
That's, that's, let's, let's reca- let's recall the vote. To, uh, there's a motion and a second to delay item five. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay.
Okay, moving on to number six. Amendment of conflict of interest provision for development powers law, and this comes from Counselor Tucker and Glenn Davis, as a carryover from previous years. And you're requesting, uh, the delegation introduce support legislation to revise and to clarify the conflict of interest provision in redevelopment powers law, but you address participation of local government, elective and appointed officials and employees in the creation and administration of tax allocation districts.
All right, there's a motion, second, Counselor House, is that to the...
Well, I actually had a request related to the previous one. It, it is part of that discussion. I mean, I, I agree to delay it. We, we need to get some input from the judges, the DA, and whoever else is affected by that change in jurisdiction. I don't necessarily approve or disapprove it, I, I don't know enough.
Right.
And so we need to arrange for that to happen.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's a good idea, thank you. All right, there is a motion, second, then, to, uh, to, to approve six. Any? Yes, ma'am.
No, this was to what?
Counselor?
What Counselor House said, and I would ask that we extend an invitation to, um, the NAACP, since they were the ones that really, um, brought this forward.
Yep, uh, we can do that. The only, all right, huh, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, and let me add to this, I don't, you know, and just looking at it, again, this is one of those twenty-four-hour deals for me, but, um, this is a major request, and it deals with the citizenry. Deals with the people of Columbus, Georgia. And I don't think they've had, they have no recognition or any thoughtful insight to be able to give this. They didn't even have a chance to even look at it or deliberate on it. And, you know, we've got a group of few making decisions on a major, major issue that affects this county and the citizens. And, you know, when I, when I think about things like this, this is something that needs to go out into the community and have public meetings and dialogue, and I don't know, it may even come back as a referendum and let the citizens decide on it. But when you, whenever you do something of this magnitude, as long as I've been on this council, we've always included the, the, the public and our community and the citizens of Columbus and these things to have input. I don't think this is a decision that should be made by a few. That's just on short thought. That's, that's my feelings on it.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, there is a motion and a second, I've lost my place, I think we're on item six. Uh, there's a motion, second, to approve that one. Any, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Uh, number seven, uh, county special local option sales tax maintenance reserve.
What is that?
Uh, it's maintenance reserve, it's been on for several years, and it comes from Counselor House and Judy Thomas.
Certain amount set aside to do regular maintenance. Uh, all right, item seven is a motion and a second to keep it on. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And, uh, number eight, uh, reciprocal sovereign immunity.
Motion second to approve number eight, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that stays on.
And, number nine, funding for behavioral health addictive diseases.
Motion second to approve number nine, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that stays on.
And number ten, personal care homes, prompt notification of local authorities upon license.
Motion second to approve ten, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Num- number eleven, personal care homes, minimum staffing requirement.
Motion second to keep eleven on there. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number twelve, casino gaming referendum, it's a carryover, uh, from Counselor Woodson from previous years.
Uh, all right, there's a couple people, and Counselor Tucker, did you have a question?
No, I was going to wait until after everything.
Okay, Counselor Davis?
No, I'm just going to say, this continues to be discussed for many, many years, but I'm, I'm sure the, 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 the understanding and thought has already been set in, in Atlanta, and it changes, it keeps changing, it keeps changing and changing, and I don't even know if this applies to the current changes. But, as I say every year, I will direct everybody's attention to the impact study that's out there that shows that this kind of operation Columbus, Georgia, would be very detrimental and would harm our local economy. There is an impact study online that you can look at. I'll say it again, I've said it every year, and you need to look at it, because a decision like this, cause and impact carries a lot of lodger, major effects.
All right, thank you. Uh, there's a motion, I did not hear a second. There's a second, uh, on, uh, item seven, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? All right, all in favor, please raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five.
No.
That's...
Yeah, that's in favor, I'm sorry, no.
All right, all, that's, you're fine, you're doing good. You're doing, keep it up. All, all opposed, raise your hand.
One, two, three.
All right, that's inconclusive.
It's inconclusive, Mayor, and we can certainly bring it back when we got a full council.
Yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll stay on, I think.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
It'll stay on, but we can bring it back if, when we get a full council. Uh, and I'll just say delay.
Twelve. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Be on the list?
Uh, well, uh, we can vote it to pull it off, and, uh, and I think you're going to see...
We had an inconclusive vote, so you don't do anything with it. You don't leave it on, you don't take it, I mean...
Well, the council member put it on, and I don't know...
We'll defer to the city attorney, my understanding was, is if, it just stays on there.
It's just a request of a counselor, normally on an inconclusive vote, you do bring it back at the request of that counselor.
So...
So.
So you don't leave it on, but you can bring it back?
Yeah, if that counselor wants it brought back, of course.
And, and... Well, if I'm going to bring it, I've got some that you've delayed that we are going to bring back. And if a council member is requesting it, I don't know, should we bring it back on those that are delayed?
Yes.
So...
So if we change the motion to a delay and...
If you have, if you have a request from a couns- another request from a counselor to bring this back, then bring it back. But at this point, it is neither approved nor disapproved. It is, it was inconclusive, so, you know...
Mayor, I just sure it is bring it back.
Bring it back?
Yeah.
I don't know what the deal is, just bring it back. It ain't going to pass anyway, you need a hundred fifty-nine calories to do it. I don't know what the big issue is. You just keep trying.
Yeah, so Mayor, on the twelve items, here's, here's what I have. On item number one, housing affordability, you asked for a delay. On the mayor, Mayor Protem compensation, you asked for a delay. Um, on designation of Muskogee County as a single-county judicial, uh, circuit, you asked for a delay. Um, on item number twelve, casino gaming, it was requested by the council that you bring it back. And so what we will take to Hometown Connection will be short-term rental, musical production, uh, state sales tax, uh, amendment of conflict of interest provision for redevelopment powers, um, county special local option sales tax maintenance reserve, reciprocal sovereign immunity, um, funding for behavioral health addictive diseases, um, personal care homes, prompt notification, and personal care home minimum staffing requirements. Those are the items we will carry to Hometown Connection.
Okay, we've got a few councils, Counselor Tucker?
Yes, um, I just wanted to, in reference to item one, housing affordability, um, within that request, it talks about qualified census tracts, and if you actually Google or pull up census data, um, qualified census tracts, it's not all of Columbus, Georgia. It's those difficult development areas that's in there as well, that's considered the depressed zones. What we had from citizens, um, just recently in, um, Counselor Barnes' area with Terminal Court, individuals were paying two hundred dollars, and now they're up to seven hundred dollars, and they can't afford to live. So, when I put this on, it was based on, not only am I putting it on here regarding our citizens, but I'm also on the planning committee, um, for the River Valley Regional Commission regional plan. And we are looking at housing a- as a problem, because it, it is a problem. It's a problem for people in poverty, it's a problem for individuals that are trying to move here. Um, finding housing, we're so under in reference to the amount of units that we have, um, but it's a problem. And then you have individuals such as those ones that, you know, s- spoke about Terminal Court, and now they are being basically priced out of a community. And that's a issue that you're going to continue to see. So my question is, where do these individuals go? How do we house them if their rent is not ten percent more or twenty percent more? It's like five hundred, six hundred percent more. There, I mean, it's a thought, it's a thought process that I think as council that we have to have, and I understand, um, we're very landlord-friendly in Columbus, Georgia, and in Georgia period. Um, and I feel like we need to be both landlord and renter-friendly a- at some point, some point. And if we're boasting doing, you know, Columbus twenty-twenty-five, and within that, we're looking at poverty, we have to address the poverty in our community, and that's why I put this on here. I didn't want to do a rent control, but I do think we need to have some type of, um, I don't know, study committee or, or something, because we, we have a, a serious problem, um, here in Columbus with our impoverished communities. We, we have people right now that are leaving their home, going into a shelter. I mean, that's the sad reality, because they cannot afford to live in Columbus, because the places that they have stayed for many years, they cannot afford to pay the rent. And what COVID-nineteen taught definitely me, um, as somebody who has worked in social work, within these last two years, the price of rent has skyrocketed for, for, for anyone. I mean, homes, rent, everything. This is qualified census tracts, it's the poorest of poor in this community. It's not saying that, you know, um, some of, some of the, some of the neighborhoods, like even in my district, and I'm sure, I mean, I done seen your, your sign up in my District Four, off Benavista Road, it's not... It was. No, when your, your, um, real estate sign, it's property management. I have no qualified census tracts in District Four, none. None, and I was shocked, none. Because what District Four used to be was retired teachers, um, military members, affluent, affluent people in the com- community were in that District Four area, because I started doing research. It is, poverty is going to continue to spread into other districts if we don't get a handle on poverty. If we don't get a handle on our housing, um, affordability, as Counselor Davis would say, where's the A in affordability? If we don't get a handle of it, I appreciate na- oh, my baby. I appreciate, um, neighbor, neighbor words. Um, but some of those houses that they're going to put out there on Victory Drive, people not going to be able to pay for that. That's, that's not going to be affordability for somebody that was paying two hundred dollars for rent. So this is why I... So this is why I put this on here. It wasn't to, um, rent control all of Columbus, Georgia, Muskogee, but to really take a deep dive in addressing those difficult development areas, depre- depressed zones, um, within the sense, the qualified census tract. And it is a small area that we can focus on because that area is gonna spread. It's gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger if, if we don't address it. So I appreciate Director, um, Rob Scott. And, um, we're actually gonna be speaking with the HUD, um, Secretary Marcia Fudge this week. And these are things that we will be talking about is addressing our housing affordability within Columbus. But we cannot, in, in my opinion, just have a blind eye to it. Um, because it's here and we have to deal with it. And I know, you know, I've, I've spoken with ACCG. I know what the stance, stance is, um, in reference to this. And it's hard because as, you know, I will speak to Rep. Hughley, i- it's a numbers game. And we don't have the numbers, but they said that we need to bring visibility to it. Like it needs to be a conversation. So maybe I should have asked study. We need to have a conversation around how we're gonna address our.
I would love to have that conversation with you.
Yeah. So.
Well, and I think, I think throughout this government, this community, you heard 2025, there are other organizations that are working the same thing. And, and housing affordability is something that is top of mind, not just right now, but looking into the future too, about how we, how we deal with that. And it's, it's gonna take more, it's gonna take more initiatives than just on the, the landlord side. They're a part of it. Because the problem I have with what we do with some of these landlords that is 150, $200 a month, they're not maintaining those properties. And they'll tell you they, they can't from a financial standpoint. So it's about building capacity. It's about getting to these people. That's why we've been pushing so hard to try to, uh, come up with ways to fund initiatives that are gonna help us move the needle on poverty. That's the, that's the long-term answer. Because if you continue to try to use a short-term answer and, and provide these dilapidated houses, that's wor-, that's worse almost than them going in a shelter and then going through the Housing Authority and getting a voucher and finding a place to live. So it's, it's just, it's frustrating because nobody should have to live the way some of the folks are living in this community. So, um, Councilor Davis?
Uh, yeah, we finished, we finished with that topic.
It's your floor, sir.
Thank you. Uh, the city manager on the personal care homes, uh, there's one part that's been left out. And I don't know if you wanna add it to amendment or you just wanna add it as another item. But I did request, uh, a while back that there has to be, um, in these personal care homes, there has to be posted a hotline or somewhere where the children can call and get help if they need it. It needs to be posted. It's required in hotels and other places, in the bathrooms and places, uh, around our city. It deals with sex trafficking, things of that nature. But these children don't have access to where or how they can get help at times. And they don't know.
So are you saying there's already a requirement?
No, I'm asking that it be also posted.
Yeah, well, why don't we?
In the personal care homes.
Why, why don't we do just a separate item?
You wanna do a separate item?
Uh, if the city attorney would just craft it, and when we bring back those that are delayed, we'll bring that one back as well.
Yeah, you know what I'm asking for.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, if there's not one, of course, you're saying that maybe there's not one.
They know there's actually a state line, but they need to be posted where the children know where they can call. If they've got abuse going on or any issues that they cannot, they don't feel comfortable.
Yeah.
Talking about. They need to know where they can.
We'll bring that back.
All right. Thank you. Councilor Barnes?
Um, I was, uh, I wanted to make a comment. Um, Councilor Tucker has a valid point. She mentioned Terminal Court. You know, this is something that's been going on for years. I can remember when I first came on council. Everyone remembers the apartments that used to be down from Carver. And I remember, um, sitting at here, I mean, the other building. And, uh, I got a call from someone and the person said, "We heard you at council." And if you, and I had special enforcement was doing a good job. What do you, where are those people gonna live at? Recently, Terminal Court, I went there and the individuals there called me. And I went there. And there was a lady just been released from the hospital. And I went to visit her, just, just to visit her. And I've been around long enough to recognize mold and things and everything like that. But as a nurse, I noticed she was wearing a trach. And so I asked Ryan, um, can you help me? Careful. Thank you. And we went there. And the house was unfit for human habitation. Substitute to that, Ryan called me and said, "You know, we got on a landlord. He's not gonna fix it up." So then he sent out to the community a communication that he, she given them 60 days to move. So to Counselor Tucker, this is not a bad thing. This is a good thing. But I think what has been verbalized and why it was delayed so that council can get a teeth. So it has not been denied. I'm in favor of it. But I think that a lot of times we need to sit back and we need to, um, ferret out the problems here at the local level. And then so we can be responsive. Once, we can send it forward. I think it's a good thing. So that'd be, there's two sides to every pancake. I think I've heard Counselor Garrett say that. And so that allows us time. And what's really interesting is the fact that we have up until, as you said, February. Cause I have some things I want, I have some issues and concerns.
Sure.
And so, so let you know, this was not denied. It was just delayed. And I'm for something like this being delayed so that we as council, the direct representatives of the citizens can have a bigger handle on it ourselves.
Thank you. Councilor Woodson?
Yes. I also wanted to add to that was, um, the Housing Authority doesn't have enough space anymore. The vouchers are limited to how many they can have. I just talked to them last week before the weekend of an individual who just lost their job. And they wanted to see if their rent can be, you know, reduced until they can get a, a new employment. Um, they're so shorthanded, it was, um, hard for the constituent to get a hold of someone. And when they finally did, they told the person that deadline passed. So the person was allowed to pay $300, but they have to continue paying the additional amount per month. So it is a very big housing crisis that we have. And, and let, let me make it clear, cause I always hear low-income people. This is not only happening to low-income individuals. This is happening to middle class. This is, uh, happening to upper families that, uh, lost their jobs or something happened in their financial budget that brings them into another level. Because if you really go to Homes for Goods or you go to any of these places, you will find out it's not always low-income families. Um, it's just a tendency. It's easier to say a low-income family than it is to say a medial, medium-interest family or someone of wealth that all of a sudden they lost everything and now is in poverty. It's easier to use a negative before you use any type of positives. So just wanted to add that. And to just, I know we, we say we need to tell our stories and we don't do a good job at it. Counselor Tucker didn't say it, but I'll say it for her. She is going to the governor's home October 17th to discuss the same issue right here that we're talking about. And sometimes we don't even know what we as individuals are doing out in the community. We need to be more informed because we don't just meet on Tuesdays and we don't just come on committees. We're actually working out in the community. And we need to do a better job of letting each other know what we're doing. Just wanted to state that. See, I could say anything. No, I'm on my way out.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Uh, Mayor, uh, number two on my agenda is the fiscal year 2021, 2022 HUD Annual Action Plan, Home ARP Allocation Recommendation.
Motion second, approve item two. Any discussion? All right, if you would, cue it. Bruce? Oh, Bruce. As I have it. Sorry. As I have it. If you, uh, Counselor Davis, register your vote.
Counselor Davis. Davis, your vote?
It's on item two.
Item two.
The HUD Annual Action Plan. Okay. That passes.
Item number three is recycling, waste reduction, and diversion grant app.
There's motion and a second to approve item three. Any discussion? Please cue it. Councillors, you can enter your votes, please. Missing one. Got it. It's approved.
So, uh, purchases, I've got two golf carts.
All right. There's a, in, motion and a second to approve all the purchases, item A through G. Mr. City Manager, if you would, run through them, please.
Yes, sir. I've got two golf carts for Metra. I've got real and personal property mail processing, uh, RFP. Um, I've got, uh, item C, uh, Feet in the Valley, uh, Midland, uh, addition. And you've, we've discussed this with you multiple times. Uh, annual maintenance support payment for the ShopFAX fleet maintenance system. Uh, E, I've got, um, amendment to queue public subscription for the Board of Tax Assessors. Uh, F, I've got ball field sore condition and field materials. And, uh, G, I've got repair of a caterpillar, a bulldozer. Uh, and then we did have a couple of emergency purchases where because of difficulty getting vehicles, we changed the vehicles, but the vehicles are less than what was budgeted or what the other vehicle would have cost. And that was for fire EMS and for, um, inspections and codes, um, uh, vehicles. And, um, and then, um, Tax Assessor's Office. Uh, those are the purchases and that one emergency purchase, uh, uh, two emergency purchases. And then I've got a couple of updates.
Well, we, we've, we've got to vote on the purchases.
I thought you were, okay. I'm sorry.
All, all in, do it now. All, all in favor on approval of purchases, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, they are.
Well, we don't, you don't have to approve emergency purchases.
Counselor Davis?
Mr. City Manager, while we're, I wanna recall, I wanna call your attention to item F on the purchases that we just talked about.
Yeah.
And I, I'd like to have a, a referral or work session or to be able to talk about this more in depth. But it, it evolves, uh, around the area that we, you know, we get beat up, continually get beat up dealing with maintenance in our community and, uh, continuing to maintain things in our community that, that we have. Uh, and, and if it takes an increase in the budget, I think that's appropriate, whatever it is. But this mainly is around our facilities. And the actual, this one reminds me, it, it, we talked about it during the budget session, but we didn't get in depth and we said we would circle back to it. And I think this is reminding me that we need to do this. But our fields, Counselor Allen knows what I'm talking about. Some of the other ones that are out there using our facilities all the time, I understand that the actual facilities, the surface, the court, the grass, the playing fields, where the kids are, where people are actually. I- if it's a, if it's a amendment to the budget and we need to increase funds to, to deal with some of these things, I think that we need to put a closer eye on that and really understand where we're at. Because there, there just seems to be, in some facilities, some of the volunteers that have written big checks for a long time, I think we've gotten used to that. They've kinda moved on. And they're not involved anymore. Their kids are doing different things. But there, there are facilities now that are starting to go in the other direction that we need to get on top of. And if we need to do, and I'm talking about the surface mainly, where the kids are actually playing. Because some of them are, you know, they are health hazards and safety hazards. It's just, you know, injuries waiting to happen in some places. But I, I would like us to really look at that close about how we can get back on top of that. And if it takes the funds for parks and wrecks, if they need it, I'm more than willing to, to support that amendment to, to do that. But I think we need to have that conversation.
Well, and certainly I, I know that staff is looking and we will, uh, put that on a list of projects that we will probably recommend that we, uh, address in the coming months. We're gonna be talking to you about some things that we think we should be considering in the coming months. So we'll, we'll put that on, on that list.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Tucker?
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you. I think we spoke about this before Counselor Davis in reference. It was something we was talking about with the parks. But I had spoke to, um, Director Holly Broder. Um, they had. Yes, she, Mimi says she needs money. Um, I was out at Shirley B. and, and I'm out at Lake Bottom. We did something as well. So just throughout the city at different parks. But when I was out there, the baseball, um, field, it was like pockets of settling water. Um, so and that's when I had that conversation with Counselor Davis in reference to, you know, what I need to say to her to see what we can do to address it. Because a lot of times, um, when that season come, comes up, the kids can't use that field because it's really, you know, really in disarray. Um, and, and, um, say a, a little information, I was out doing kickball and running. I almost twisted my ankle again because it's some areas where it's big, deep holes. Um, so it's, it's a lot in reference to our fields. I agree with Counselor Davis. We, we need to address it in really safety, um, to safety concerns. So.
Yeah. Well, and again, we'll put it on the list. But, um, of course, this is my first time hearing about it. And I know you said you talked to.
Yeah, I'm saying sorry. It, it was a, it was a while ago with the, um, the baseball and I should have forwarded to you.
Or, or Deputy City Manager Goodwin, you know. But, but we are going to, again, be coming back to you. Um, we're gonna update you on our finances. And then we're gonna recommend some things, uh, to you that we think we should be doing. And we'll certainly have asked them to put that on that list.
When you do the update on the finances, City Manager, um, will we get the tax, um, information, like how much tax revenue we have received? Um.
Yeah, we ti-, and we typically do that on the, um, monthly update. I don't know. I think ones do. But, but certainly, yeah, we, we, we can share with you on the sales tax.
Yes.
Yeah. We can share with you, um, in that u- uh, update, uh, the, the monthly collection and then year-to-date. We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
And, and we, again, we should do that each month when we do the monthly update on finances. But this will be a different, it will be an update based on where we are today. And so you'll be here in, in the coming weeks. We'll be doing that.
All right. Counselor Woodson?
Yes. I'm City Manager. Um, listening to this conversation, I remember now I saw this over the summer. Can we see if that, that land or that softball field, that baseball field that's behind the girls' and boys' club on Casita Road belongs to us? Because when we were there this summer for, uh, Youth Leadership Summit, uh, we were doing some activities and stuff. And I looked back there and there, it seemed like it used to be a baseball field back there where people could play. But it's like over and grown. It's in really bad condition. I meant to ask, but I didn't. Can you please find out?
I, I can, but I think that's their field, not ours. But we'll verify.
Could you verify?
I, I know the exact field you're talking about. Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm right behind it. You know, I'm, it's right behind it. I never noticed it till that time, so I'm curious to know who it belongs to. Thank you.
So with that, Mayor, we've got some updates. Deputy City Manager Hodge is going to do an ARP update, it's going to be brief. She's going to do an indigent care RFP update that's brief. And then we are going to have Sarah Lane, who is CEO of Valley Healthcare System, do a Department of Defense Innovative Readiness Training Event Success Update. And then I've got one add-on. We talked to you some time ago about the A Street, Seventeenth Street Quarter. And you hear, you get emails from time to time about that. But we've got an update on that that we want to share with you today as well. So Deputy City Manager Hodge for ARP and then Indigent Care and then Sarah Lane. And then we hear from Director Donna Newman with Mitchell Greenway from Stan Tech. Deputy City Manager Hodge.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilor. This will be a brief update. Just want to walk through the American Rescue Plan and where we're at with the current funding and then the plan for Phase Two of the funding. And just to remind everyone that this was a law that was passed in as a response to the negative impacts of COVID. And so we're still operating under the parameters of the American Rescue Plan and how we can utilize those funds. It was 1.9 trillion in economic relief, 362 billion was a direct aid to states and local governments. And so there is specific parameters on how these funds can be utilized. And they have continued to update the frequently asked questions and the final rule. But it still falls within these four major categories, which is the response to the public health emergency, respond to workers, perform any essential work, revenue replacement for the government and then investment in water, sewer or broadband. So it does have to fall under those categories. We have received both our allocations of 78 million, Phase One was half of it at 39,241,000. And then we have, this past June, received our second allocation of the 39 million. So those expenses, just as a reminder, have to be incurred during a certain period of time, which is March 3rd of 2021 through March, December 31st of '24. And they must be expended by December 31st of '26. There's requirements to all of these funds that we have received and we continue to file those reports as required. So again, how we utilized Phase One funding was the automation of the garbage collection. The carts have been delivered. We anticipate the delivery of the trucks sometime in June or July time period of next year. So that process will continue as we move forward for the automation of garbage collection. Ambulances, those have been ordered. We originally thought we would have a delivery in June of '22. Then it was delayed to December. Now they're telling us maybe sometime in November. So I'm going to say by the end of the year, we should have delivery of those ambulances. Also, the Community Safeguard Program, we allocated funding to Cure Violence, the Summer Youth Program, the cameras. And the Cure Violence is going to come back at a later date and give you an update on where they're at. But they are moving forward. We have expended $100,000 towards this effort. They have started their recruitment process for those navigators in the area. And so I'm going to have them come back at a later date and provide a specific update on Cure Violence. But they are moving forward and they have made some strides in that area. The camera program, we've paid $2.2 million to date. Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin gave an update on that program. This is Phase One and we are wanting to include Phase Two and Three in the Phase Two of ARP funding. Broadband cybersecurity upgrades, this was $3 million. We've expended $884,000 to date to upgrade the CSC and the Civic Center. They have hired a contractor for this and they're moving forward with the installation on these other facilities. Revenue recovery, we were allowed to recognize revenue recovery of 3.5 million in that initial phase. Hotel motel tax was 2.4 of that and then the general fund, just over a million dollars. And again, we provided premium pay to public safety and other essential workers out of the Phase One funding. The grant program, we have expended all of those dollars in the Phase One. It was 3 million for small business, a million for nonprofits and 850,000 for the economic tourism grants. We had come back to council and requested that the funding available in the nonprofit and the economic tourism be transferred to the small business, which council approved. And we have expended all of those funds through that initial process. And I'm going to talk to you in just a few minutes about our next phase of that process. And we have expended $61,000 for the administration of this program. So on the state fiscal recovery funds, we were allocated $4 million, 3 million in small business and 1 million in nonprofit. We've executed the contract with the state, we've revised the criteria, the state signed off on our guidelines. And so we will be opening that portal up October 31st of this year. So in just a few weeks, we're going to reopen that portal. Anyone who had applied by the deadline of June 30th, we will get with them to make sure that their application is transferred over to the portal for these funds and that they meet those additional requirements. So we'll work with those who have submitted. And we ran out of funds and so they will go into this next allocation of funding. For Phase Two requests, so we have requested from departments what they would like to submit for the ARP Round Two. And so this is just a list of what was submitted to us. There is no edits to this list and it's a very long list, so I tried to consolidate it for you today. Excuse me, community reinvestment submitted for $11 million for an affordable housing program. Information technology, 4.87 million. And all of the items that they've listed, from laptops to computers to switches to backup systems for the IT department. Fire and EMS, 7.3 million dollars for fire engines, ladder trucks, ambulances, their equipment. The Golf Authority, 2.1 million. Part of theirs is revenue recovery and then also some water infrastructure. Civic Center, just over a million dollars, outdoor staging, arena equipment, all kinds of equipment, playground, water refill stations, coroner's office, $46,000. The Police Department, almost $10 million. And this is a list of all the things that they've requested. Criminal intelligence and gang intelligence, optics expansion, ballistic shields, their gun buyback program. A lot of good programs from the Police Department. Public Works, 11.25 million. One thing she don't think about, land acquisition for indigent burials. We had an increase in burials for COVID-related items. Yard waste collection, fleet maintenance expansion, compacters for Uptown. Homeland Security, a new mobile command vehicle. The City Manager's Office, 650,000, wanted to replace all of the equipment for CCGTV so that we can continue to provide that service to our citizens so they don't have to come to the council chambers. Also, Family Connection is a neighborhood leader navigator program. This is something through the, kind of the revamped Family Connection program through the City Manager's Office that we're looking at doing to provide these navigators or leaders in each one of the council districts to be able to provide those services to family and childrens and connect them to the right place. I don't know, City Manager, if you want to add to that.
And I will mention something on this, and this would be funded for three years. And the mayor and I had opportunity to attend the Hub City Mayor/City Managers Meeting in Athens two weeks ago. And the one thing that they're doing with their Family Connection and community schools, they get the state allocation, of course, but the city of Athens, the consolidated unified government, they put in $900,000 to support the program. They have 19 neighborhood leaders and then three additional people. They're full-time people. And these neighborhood leaders all have a, they have divided the county into 19 districts. And that neighborhood leader navigator, if you will, is a resource person for every person in his or her district. And that person makes sure they brief and keep them up to speed on WIC, SNAP, you know. If it's a battery shelter that they need, just whatever their needs are, they are, these neighborhood leaders, they put in 900,000 a year and they hire these people and they're full-time in a nonprofit organization provided by the city of Athens. And so, you know, I kind of had the idea to borrow from that structure. We wouldn't hire people, but for three years, my thought would be for each council district, have a neighborhood leader navigator for each council district. Some district might not require a person and a district might be able to share it, one person, if they don't have a lot of poverty. And so these navigators would be on a stipend, let's say $500 a month. And they could work their full-time job and have set hours where they have a bi-monthly meeting, district meeting in one of your districts with anyone who wants to have a problem, concern. And if you don't know how to get SNAP, if you don't know how to get WIC, they are to help you, navigate you through how you get there. And if you got a concern about how your landlord is, they'll help be able to navigate you on how to get relief from a slumlord. But a neighborhood leader navigator, and it would be a three-year pilot, you know, if you had eight of those at $500 a month stipend, we're not paying you, but stipend, that's 48,000 a year for three years. And if it's successful, then council could decide whether it's something they want. If it's not successful, then it goes away. But neighborhood leaders, navigators, a model of, a kind of a, similar to what Athens is doing, but they're putting in 900,000 and they hired 19 navigators, neighborhood leaders. That's what they're doing in Athens. So that was the thought as a pilot program through the ARP money.
In addition, the Trade Center, 4.9 million, again, upgrades to the Trade Center and their facility. The camera program, as I mentioned, Phase Two and Phase Three is 4.8 million. And then we would qualify again for revenue recovery funds. We're estimating around $10 million for that. There have been other requests, has been mentioned at council meeting or in other meetings, to add those to the ARP list. So these are those items that I have heard from council members and others. City Hall Security, Food insecurity program, broadband access, United Way Poverty Zone, True Springs Fiber, Command Center, street lighting. So these are just other programs that we've included on the list for consideration. We have a public meeting scheduled for October the 27th. And this council chambers from 5:30 to 6:30. Again, that will be broadcast live on CCGTV. So if those can't make it, there you can also tune in and it will be replayed and we'll provide information on all the programs and get input from citizens.
Pam, I was distracted. I didn't see on there about the poverty piece that's going in with United Way.
It's on that list.
United Way Poverty Zone.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You just put a dollar, there's no dollar amount.
Yeah, and that was something that actually started with ESP. They did a white paper on trying to come up with somebody, it's modeled after the Home for Good, where the government actually contributed heavily for the first three years to give them an opportunity to make it self-sustaining. And what it, it's exactly like what Pat's doing with Home for Good. It's somebody who focuses 24/7 on poverty reduction. The idea being over three years of funding, it ought to be able to identify other resources to tie together with that group. So I know we talked to them, want to make sure that's on there for council's consideration and make sure the public sees it too.
So again, we have the public meeting scheduled in a couple of weeks. And then we will be coming back to council with a final recommended list in November for your consideration.
Councilor Tucker?
Yes, I was in the same thing. It was going a little fast. Did I miss anything in reference to housing? Did we have anything from community reinvestment?
11 million on the list.
They submitted 11 million.
I saw public words.
Just a small little request, you know. But let me just tell you this, while you're saying that, when we were in Athens, do you know, they have a special purpose local option sales tax? Do you know they allocated $45 million for affordable housing over the 10 years of the collection?
Yes, because one of the commissioners, Commissioner Tyson, I don't know if you've met her, she's a firecracker.
I just wanted, and so when we go to these Hub City and other meetings, we see what they're doing. Just like the program that I mentioned to you, that's what they're doing, you know, but 45. And I came back, I called Pam, I says, can you believe that they took a sales tax? The sales tax that we just did for 400 million, can you imagine that we would have put 45 million dollars on that list for affordable housing in Columbus, Georgia?
And when you rode through Athens, you saw how some of the development and the way it looks and it's walkable and it's vibrant and it's connected and you can.
You're right. Well, they showed us. And I told him, I want you to get that same PowerPoint presentation that they showed us in Athens. And we want to duplicate it, the PowerPoint to show what we are doing and the difference. But they are, I just, I'd like to share with you what other communities have.
But that's what Councilor Woods and said. The benefit of going to these different communities, you know, we can benchmark the good things that they do. And I absolutely love the navigator program. And I can't think which mayor of Atlanta, I don't know if it was Shirley or Wade, it probably was in the 70s. But they were doing the neighborhood planning units, the MPUs. And exactly what City Manager is saying, you would have those neighborhood district meetings and something that Mr. Marvin Broward, who is mostly always in these council chambers, but at a time where people are actually off work, they would meet and discuss, you know, projects and.
But you got to live in the neighborhood.
But you, and that was the.
That's one of the other keys.
That was, you know, really the guardrails behind it. But District Four would have their navigator, you know, for District Four. In Atlanta, it's called neighborhood planning MPUs. But each district would have it.
That's right.
And they would have it somewhere like at Shirley B.
That's right.
Or, you know, Manchester.
Athens actually did theirs by elementary school district so that they had a more densely positioned group of navigators. I think that's how they came up with their 19, because they've got 19 elementary schools. So what they did is try to position one of those navigators within each one of those.
Those schools.
Neighborhood school zones, so.
And these are full-time employees with benefits. We can't afford that, but.
It was 900,000 a year.
No, but we could, we could do it in a similar way, but less costly. And that was what I was suggesting.
And I like it and it's the same thing where you brought for the, I can't think of the name.
Quality control?
The quality control. And myself and I think Councilor Barnes have worked, the quality control. I know I went out, you know, with the individuals and was able to see. And Councilor Woods and went out with the individuals. So those type of initiatives, they really are helpful to the, to me, to me. So thank you. I think this is good.
If there's no other questions, I'll move on to the next update, which is the indigent healthcare update. Just to remind everyone, we did have an existing contract that expired last June. And so there was an amendment made, uh, to the charter to allow a levy up to three mils. Uh, that was passed by the governor in April of twenty-two. So what was included in the budget was two point five mils for indigent healthcare. Uh, council did pass a resolution in May that allowed any successful bidder to, um, backdate until July first of twenty-twenty-two, so we didn't have any missing time period. So on October third, RFP twenty-three dash zero 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 nine was issued for indigent healthcare services for the medically indigent persons in Muskogee County. Uh, that RFP is on the streets, so I'm not at liberty to discuss a lot about the RFP. It is an active RFP. Uh, medically indigent, they must be a resident in Muskogee County, not covered by another insurance or government program. And there is an income eligibility component to this. Uh, successful bidders, again, will have the opportunity to seek reimbursement, um, for their costs beginning July one of twenty-twenty-two. The responses are due back October the twenty-eighth. Uh, so just wanted to give council an update that that RFP is out. And I know, um, people are looking at it. We've had a few questions for clarification. So I know that, um, those interested parties have received the RFP and are, uh, putting together their proposal.
How many families were enrolled last year?
How many?
How many families were enrolled in the indigent care program last year?
And the finance director gave that number, it was a very low...
Yeah, I couldn't remember, was it, was it...
Six twenty-eight is what sticks in my mind, but I don't know that that's the right number.
I think that's right. I think it was around six hundred people.
Right.
And the average number per family in it was one, I think. So six hundred, under seven hundred people were enrolled in that program, so...
Yeah. So Mayor, we want...
I would say though, that as, as people call you and they, and you may get calls from medical personnel, I, I would, I would refer them back to the, to the panel that is reviewing the RFP, uh, so that we don't unintentionally jeopardize their eligibility.
Right.
They need to contact the purchasing division of the finance department.
Not even Pam Hodge.
Not even Pam Hodge.
Okay, uh, Mayor, uh, we just wanted to provide those couple of brief updates on, from the deputy city manager. And now I'm going to call on Sarah Lang, CEO of Valley Healthcare System for Department of Defense Innovative Readiness Training Events Success Update. Uh, Ms. Sarah Lang.
Ms. Lang, thank you for your patience.
Oh, it was very interesting.
I can imagine.
So, good, um, afternoon, everyone. Uh, again, my name is Sarah Lang and, and I am the Chief Executive Officer of Valley Healthcare System here in Columbus, um, nonprofit, um, primary care organization here in the Chattahoochee Valley region. As I, I was here this morning, there were several words that, that kept coming up and they were collaboration and partnership and region and, um, communication. And I thought as I, I listened to all of those presentations, that's exactly why I'm here, is to tell you about a partnership, collaboration, communication, that back in July, I came before you with, um, the mission officer in charge, Lieutenant Colonel Raymond Martin, who was partnering with the city and Valley Healthcare as our community partner to bring, um, what they consider real-world joint operational mission to Columbus. And let me tell you, they were wowed by this, this community. Um, I did provide you with, um, my executive summary to give you a little bit of, um, an understanding of what we accomplished in fifteen days here in this region. We had, um, the opportunity to set up locations in four different areas here. Uh, the Civic Center being one of the, the central locations, Providence Baptist Church and Opelika, um, Borrigard, uh, Stewart County High School, the old Stewart County High School, and Paul's Humane Society Building. As you will read and for those, uh, watching, um, we had a hundred and sixty-four service members from the Army, the Air Force, Air, Air Force and Army National Guard, um, the Navy, working together, training to work together in times of emergency. And it was also interesting that they were also able, in this training, they were able to, um, to, uh, complete some tactical combat training, which I thought was, they, they didn't let me in on that one, but they did some tactical training as well. But through those days, we saw over two thousand individuals, to be exact, two thousand seven hundred and twenty-three persons were afforded, um, healthcare services that was of no cost to them. What I did not include in this executive, what you did not include in this executive summary, was that we saw and served over six hundred and fifty animals. We had two veterinarians from the U.S. Public Health Service that came and worked with Paul's Humane Society, and in one day saw six hundred animals. One individual brought not only their truck filled with dogs, but they also had a trailer as well. So, um, not only did they provide the services at the, at the Civic Center on that Saturday, but they also provided services during the week at the location at, at Paul's, um, Humane Society, um, on Melgen Road. So that, that was an interesting combination. So you had human and animal services provided. The other thing we found that was most required of individuals here in the community was vision care. And as you will also see, that we provided over one thousand eyeglasses to individuals in the community. They were lined up around, almost around the Civic Center building, trying to get in, to get those free glasses. So I wanted to come back to you and say to you, the partnership that you had provided with Valley Healthcare, Piedmont, Columbus, and of course the Civic Center, the Stewart County, uh, Family Connection, the, the partners that with you were able to extend this service to our community and the community in the region. It, uh, was a very enlightening experience. It took over two years of, of working together. And Councilman Barnes, thank you for pushing me to get this thing accomplished. And I loved going to the Pentagon and presenting there and I thought, I mean, they're going to strip search me here, you know? It was truly, um, uh, an enlightening, but, but very worthwhile experience of being able to bring that type of partnership and collaboration with the armed forces here to Columbus. And they really want to come back and do it again. So, um, thank you. That is, is my, my departing, uh, words is thank you for your cooperation, your support from the council, um, to make sure that we have this opportunity for our citizens here.
Well, Ms. Lang, I tell you, it was, it was truly, as you pointed out, when you first got the podium, a collaboration. And I think Counselor Barnes was, uh, one of the driving forces behind it in its early stages. He brought the folks into my office to meet with, with me and we talked about how we could try to make this happen from, from a resource standpoint, from the city's perspective. And look at these numbers and see the number of residents and the number of people in this area and, uh, that were, were impacted positively by that.
Oh, yes.
Man, what a, it's, you hit it out of, out of the park. Counselor Woodsen?
Ms. Lang, um, do you happen to know by any chance, 'cause I don't see here the number of patients I was seeing by the dental? Because the dental has had a long waiting list.
Yes. I'm still counting those numbers.
Are you? Yeah, 'cause that was a big, it was the, um, glasses and dental that was the most populated, can I say that? Pummeled areas. I'm interested to see what those are. And I just want to say to you, and, and I didn't know about Counselor Barnes, um, thank you, because I think it, it was awesome. It was done in my district, so I was excited. But not only that, there was a lot of people that had needs, that were taken care, that I would say normally would not have been taken care of. Um, there was also medications, regular physicians, there was all kinds. It was, the only part I didn't know was about the animals, but everything else, um, it was an amazing, um, setup. I think they did very well. I think the Civic Center did a great job in, um, hosting, um, the floor for everyone. Um, if there was a need, I saw it being, you know, taken care of right away. So I just want to say hats off to you, your staff, um...
Thank you.
My fellow veterans and to my counselor here. And like I said before, earlier in my statement, you really don't know what each council member is doing and look at. Today, that's, that's a confirmation of what I said earlier, when I was talking about Counselor Tucker and now him and Glenn and those that do things behind the scene, you never know.
And thank you for getting the word out.
Oh, you're welcome. It was my pleasure to help. I like helping.
Thanks.
And, and two things that were never, um, with the Innovative Readiness, um, Training Program that had not been tried before, one was telehealth. And we were able to provide that experiment with telehealth through that, um, that mission, as well as, uh, mayor, mobile health. And we were able to send our mobile units out, uh, and they utilize those units, uh, in, in the rural counties. So we sent those out and, and they were very successful.
Well, that's outstanding. Uh, and Counselor Woodsen, one quick thing to add?
Yes, um, you said that they would love to come back? Um, or is there any indication that they're going to try? And if they did, are they looking at next year or two years down the line?
It will be two years.
Two years down the line?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Barnes?
Sarah, when, when was that first meeting that we had? It was, goodness gracious, I, that we sat down and all the military showed up and we sat and whatever. I'm, I'm trying to think.
Actually, it was, one, the first one was in nineteen.
Two thousand, I thought it was two thousand nineteen. And just a couple of days later, I came to the mayor and he jumped on it, he saw the huge benefit to the community. But it did, it takes that while because the, the military has to rotate and, and, and whatever. But, um, that was a huge, um, idea, yours, reaching out to the military. And, um, I think it is every two years and they have various locations, 'cause they, I think the colonel called me and left a message, uh, for me, some of the other locations within the conus that they were going to, uh, be at. But that was very brilliant idea, yours, a lot of work. One thing that's good about this community, you can see first of all, how quickly they go, I think I'm talking to you one day, the next morning I went to the mayor and showed it to him. I think he called you that same, had Richard Bishop call you and then he, you told me he contacted you. So that was Mr. Mayor, it was huge. Took a little while, but you see what a huge benefit that was to, to this community, really huge.
Great benefit.
And then we're thankful for all the other partners that, that got on board. But Sarah, that was, reaching out to the military was a tremendous, tremendous idea. And so it was just such a huge turn and benefited. I'm so glad that you put the, the, how many people were really serviced and how many families?
That's right.
Um, that, that are still in need, but were really serviced and blessed by the team. And so thank you again.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Pops. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I, I just wanted to thank you, um, sorry, before it started, I have a show with DJ Chip, um, on Fridays. And I was promoting this event and the, the one thing people was calling about is can we get the dental service? So that's, you know, with me saying that, that was the, the high, 'cause it's, it cost a, and it said extractions, you know, was one of the services. It costs a lot to remove a tooth. So, um, I just want to thank you. This is something, you know, amazing, um, that we had in our community and it really did bring me back to, you know, my military time and just those readiness activities that we used to do. This is important for the community, but it's important for the military community as well, because this gives them the opportunity to work in their craft and then prepare for, you know, sadly, the war, so the mission, so...
But it also, it also, excuse me, but they, they, one of the, the, uh, caveats to this was to have them work together, because they don't always, the different units don't always have an opportunity to work together and try to plan together.
Yeah.
And that was one of their comments to me is that, thank you, or thanking us, the city, for allowing them the opportunity for each, um, each one, the Navy, the Army, the Air Force, to get together and, and plan a mission like this together.
Yeah, and I've worked in joint command, so in, in UCOM, that's what we did as joint. But that's the esprit de corps that you're talking about and we have it as military. And when you put us together, we gonna work together for the coming good, 'cause we are mission-driven people. So, but just thank you for, you know, your work. This, this was really, um, important for our citizens.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, my final update is Eighth Street, Seventeenth Street, Quarter. I've got, uh, Engineering Director Donna Newman and she has Mitchell Greenway from Stantec with her. Uh, we presented to you before and, uh, want to give you an additional update.
Uh, I'm going to start off by reminding everyone, we do have a public meeting, open house on the Steam Mill Road Corridor, uh, this evening at thirty-six seventy-nine Steam Mill Road, which is the Columbus Baptist Association. They have graciously allowed us to use their facilities to host that meeting this evening from five to six-thirty. Mitchell is the designer for, um, Steam Mill Road and also for the Eighth Street, Thirteenth Street, Seventeenth, three different corridors. Um, we have had some public meetings and some meetings with the stakeholders in working through these corridor studies, so he's here to give us the results. Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure this works. There we go. Okay, just wanted to catch everybody up where we're at. We've met a couple of times previously to go over these projects, uh, just a quick location map of where these, where these streets are in relation to one another. When we previously met, we, we talked about some of these, uh, steps that you see to the left of the, uh, public input, uh, component there. We went through all those steps. Last time we met, we were at the public input, um, stage of the project. And the overall goals of this, when we started it, was, um, uh, safety enhancements, improved mobility. And through the public involvement process, we found out from everyone that really the big focus, uh, or what they wanted to see was traffic calming, uh, pedestrian safety... pedestrian safety and aesthetics, or aesthetic improvements to these corridors. And all of those are contributing factors to safety, some more than others, and of course, to improve mobility options. Where we're at now, since we've gone through that public involvement process, gathered the information, we presented some alternatives to the public, got some feedback on those, and we now have some preferred alternatives for each corridor. And I'll just go through those, hit some of the highlights. We have some, there are some common themes throughout all of these that we want to address. Repairing damaged sidewalks, filling in some sidewalk gaps where there's not good connectivity for pedestrians, improving lighting on all of these corridors for pedestrians, so it's just safer for them walking the streets at night. Removing overgrown vegetation that could obstruct sightlines at intersections and create some safety issues there when you're pulling out from a side street. And overgrown vegetation on sidewalks that block the sidewalks and you have to walk around. It's not, it's, makes it really hard for ADA individuals or handicapped individuals to maneuver down the sidewalk. So we wanted to do those improvements to all of these corridors. But looking a little closer at each individual street, this is the Eighth Street Concept, so zooming in on a few of the intersections here. So one of the things that we found out from the public process was Front Avenue and Broadway with the wide medians. People, there were some complaints that people were turning down the wrong direction. And so we want to implement some signage there to really better notify the public and educate, or instruct them exactly where they should go when they're turning down their streets. And so that should have a big impact, a lot of return on investment for what we can do with that. And as we go through the Eighth Street Corridor, a lot of, essentially everything that we're proposing on Eighth Street can be implemented at other locations throughout downtown Historic District. So looking at First Avenue, we want to install tabletop crosswalks at this intersection, tighten up the corners a little bit, so it's not so far to cross the street for pedestrians. This will make pedestrians more visible to vehicular traffic, but it also slows cars down when they have to cross over those tabletop crosswalks. Then at Second Avenue, installing a mini roundabout. This, again, is a traffic calming measure that we want to implement. It can be fit within the existing footprint of the intersection, so we shouldn't have to acquire any right-of-way or reconstruct any curbs for this improvement. That'll have a huge benefit on traffic calming. And then at Third Avenue, more of the same, very similar to First Avenue, the tabletop crosswalks at the intersection and pinching these corners in a little bit to make it tighter for traffic calming. And for everything that we're proposing along Eighth Street too, it is in Historic District. We've conferred with Historian. Nothing that we're proposing would detract from the historic designation for the district. And everything that we want to do, we can incorporate materials, building materials on these projects that are consistent with what you would expect to see in this area. The Thirteenth Street Concept, I think we've shown this before. The big change on Thirteenth Street is we want to remove the parallel parking on the edges of the street coming into downtown. It's really not a good place to have parallel parking. It's actually quite dangerous with the volume of traffic that we're seeing here. So what we want to do is take that out, shift the through traffic to the outside edges so that we can install a median down Thirteenth. And with that median, it would be wide enough that we could have some street trees along Thirteenth Street. And that vertical element, tightening up the travel lanes and introducing some vertical elements will slow traffic down as they come across the bridge into downtown. At Broadway, and I think this would also apply to First, you've got the dual signal heads at that intersection, which can be confusing to motorists. You know, sometimes they stop in the middle of the intersection. So what we want to do is make some signal upgrades here, putting in some programmable signals, which we can kind of direct angles of view for those signal heads. So if you sit in one spot, you can't see that green or that red, but if you sit at a different angle, those apply to you. So it's really, really common use of programmable signals. And then implementing some signage to help alleviate some of the issues that we're seeing at these two signals. We have First, same thing there. Second Avenue, mentioned that we're taking out the parallel parking on Thirteenth Street, but we did, were able to find some additional parking spaces at a couple of locations. Second Avenue north of Thirteenth. If you recall, that picks up two through lanes or two travel lanes headed north when you cross Thirteenth Street. We don't need two travel lanes at this location, so what we want to do is add some parallel parking on that outside lane and continue the single through lane through that block. Same thing, similarly at Third, we're going to pick up some additional parking spaces on Third as well, north of Thirteenth. So we still have a net loss of a few spaces on Thirteenth Street, but we've, there's some unused parking on the side streets that we can utilize. I think that the parking garage or parking net that's going in at Broadway at the intersection there has some public parking that would be accessible as well. And with the improved crosswalks, traffic signals that we wanted to implement on Thirteenth, I think that we could employ all of those parking alternatives and really actually pick up extra spaces relative to what we're losing. And this is just the end, showing where the median was stopped here at Fifth Avenue. Seventeenth Avenue. One of the big changes here at the Eighteenth Street intersection, we want to put a mini roundabout here. It's a confusing intersection, it's dangerous with the ninety-degree turn almost. And a lot of people, when they pull up to the stop signs, they're not sure who has the right-of-way at the intersection, so putting in a mini roundabout will alleviate that. It'll slow the cars down and it's one-way traffic around the circle, so it just, it just makes it a lot safer for vehicles. And it will have improved crosswalks and some sidewalk connectivity here too, so pedestrians, it'll be much safer for pedestrians. And then between Yard Street and Twenty-Second Street, so this is next to St. Elmo, we want to tighten things up here with some new striping, moving stop bars out closer. We will remove the parking, on-street parking between that section of road. There's really no need to have parking there. It creates some sight distance issues when you're sitting at the stop sign. It can cause some really unsafe conditions for motorists. So we want to tighten all that up, narrow up the lanes, and that should have a traffic calming effect as well. And then at the north end, as we approach Talboton, we want to reconstruct, do some minor reconstruction to Twenty-Eighth Street intersection and then the St. Elmo Drive intersection. There's a lot of extra pavement there. So we'll tighten those radii up, channelize everything a lot better, so it'll be a lot, force cars to slow down when they're making those turns. It'll make the crosswalks for pedestrians much shorter, so it'll be safer all around for motorists and pedestrians. And then since we're doing sidewalk connectivity for this entire segment of Seventeenth, when we get to the north end, we want to be able to connect to the fall line trace. So what we want to propose there is a signalized crosswalk across Talboton Road to get pedestrians over to the trail. That's kind of where we settled. Overall cost for all three of these projects totaled is about six million. And I would say about forty percent, thirty to forty percent of that is lighting. And the way that we've, the way that we've pulled all this together, all of these projects can be phased in over time. You don't have to do the entire corridor at one time. So for Eighth Street, you can do the mini roundabout now. You can do raised crosswalks at Third Avenue, you know, two years from now. So you can kind of stagger that and budget it as you need to and work it into your program. So it's not, it's not like it's a, you know, a six-million-dollar hit all at one time. Everything can kind of be implemented over a number of years. So, all the layouts for the project, all the reports that we've pulled together, you can still go to columbuscorridors.com website and view those in more detail. There are a lot more improvements, recommendations that we're making for each of these corridors that are covered in those reports. So if you're looking for something to put you to sleep at night, it'd be some great reading. If you have any specific questions regarding any of these projects, please direct them to Director Newman and she'll make sure. She's been very involved the whole way, so she can probably answer. But if she can't, she'll make sure to get in touch with me and we'll get you a response.
All right, Councilor Woodson?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it, you and the presentation. I'm happy to hear that about Eighth Street, the flashing light, because I've been on Ms. Newman a lot about the one on Ninth, because a couple of times I almost got hit because citizens, some citizens of Columbus know to stop and go, but others don't, or others that visit. And like myself, I try not to be in the newspaper, so I stopped and someone almost hit me in the back and I said, oh, wait a minute, and I kept going. So I appreciate you clarifying and looking into that and putting more signage or a signal light, you know, change it from a red to green to yellow to a signal light that would notify. But I had a question for you because I know that you're having the Steammill Road presentation, but you also mentioned Eighth and Thirteenth and Seventeenth. That's not part of the presentation tonight, is that correct?
No, ma'am. Tonight will be specifically about Steammill Road.
And, I don't know, Ms. Newman, have we decided when we would have a community meeting in reference to or an update to Eighth, Thirteenth, Seventeenth Street? Because you're talking about removing some parking spaces and I'm pretty sure that my phone and Councilor Garrett's phone's gonna ring around that area because you're eliminating some parking spaces.
We had a public meeting where we presented all of these displays. One was, I don't remember exactly.
Wow, I missed that. What was the outcome? Can I get an update?
Two, three months ago. We can, actually, the report that we have, we've summarized all the feedback that we got from that public meeting. We had comment cards that we collected. I think there were fifty or so people who showed up to the meeting. As you can imagine, responses were kind of across the board. But generally speaking, I think everybody was, and again, generally speaking, everybody was in favor of the improvements on.
My other question, the mayor and I were having a sidewalk conversation and I'm speaking in that area because I represent that area. The roundabouts, are the roundabouts gonna be like, kind of like not a sidewalk around it or lift it up, or they're gonna be down? Because our concern is about buses going around the roundabout and trucks going around the roundabouts. Have y'all considered that in the planning of the calming around?
Yes, ma'am. So many roundabouts are designed for smaller vehicles, passenger cars generally, to go around those central islands. But they're also designed for larger vehicles to traverse over those islands. So if someone, if someone makes a wrong turn with a truck, large truck, we want them to be able to navigate that without damaging their vehicle or our intersection. And so those central islands will be mountable and buses and such can drive right over them.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor House?
Thank you, Mayor. This is for City Attorney Newman, since I hear about Eighth Street almost as much as I hear about anything else. How soon will, how soon will the people that live down there begin to see physically something happen? Six months? A year? I know it takes a while to design everything and do the contracts.
We have to prove it.
Well, no, we don't have a funding source yet. That's the first thing. So we will, this is, you know, we've been hearing about what can we do, what can we do? Well, here's what we can do. And then the next step would be, where does the money come from?
Okay.
So we'll figure that out.
Okay, all right.
Then we'll talk to you.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Councilor Thomas?
No, no, we'll figure it out. Oh, that's on the list.
Let's say, Councilor Thomas is queued up. Let's let her go.
Following up on the budget question, tell me again how much you said this, all of this would cost, might cost, could cost.
All three corridors, construction costs, we're estimating right at six million dollars for all three and that's everything.
Total for the three.
Total for the three.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilor Davis?
The city manager, I wanted to bring this to your attention since we talked a little bit about signage. I don't know, I guess it's under the Traffic Engineering Department. I don't know if we do a annual signage inventory, but I think we might need to. You know, a lot of these places you're talking about down here, if you just start driving around, signs are in trees, signs are covered up by trees, signs are in bushes, signs are covered up by bushes. And you just sit there going, what's the use of that sign? But you got fifteen in a row there and you can't even see what they say. But it's, you know, it's in places around town and it's hard to just, you know, pick a sign and then call and say, hey, can you do something with this sign? I don't know who goes around and does the sign inventory or whatever, but I think we need to pay a little more attention to that because it just doesn't look right and it's more, you look at it and it's more or less, well, it's a form of pollution. Litter and, you know, it just, we can, I think we can do better.
Well, and we can.
You know what I'm talking about, right?
And I do. And we have a lot of things on our list. We just gotta be able to hire some people and put them to work, but it's on our list. I understand.
And maybe when our people are out there and just take a piece of orange tape or whatever, put it around it, so you'll know where they're at and go back and give them that.
They can drop a pin on it through the 311 app. If you see it out there, you can access that and tell them right where it is. Right.
But I understand.
All right, I think that's it.
Mayor, that.
Thank you. And thanks for waiting so long. Appreciate it.
That concludes my agenda today.
All right. Madam Clerk, let me get your mic turned on. There you go.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Councilors. For the Clerk's Agenda, Item One, this is an item of information, a Certificate of Need Application that was filed by the Medical Center, Inc., doing business as Piedmont Columbus Regional Midtown. This is in regards to a project to relocate the Children's Hospital to another location on the hospital campus. Item Number Two is a resolution changing the regularly scheduled meetings for the month of November.
Motion to approve. We have a second? All right, motion, second to approve, all in, oh yeah, hang on, we've got a question from Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, the way I read the November resolution, we're only having one meeting in November?
No, sir. It would be, it actually will be three. And I can go ahead and read that schedule out at this time.
Okay.
November first, the proclamation session would be canceled. November eighth, we will have a regularly scheduled meeting at nine o'clock AM. November fifteenth, this will be a meeting at five-thirty PM. And then November twenty-ninth, we will have the Consent Agenda/Work Session at nine o'clock AM. And then I would like to go ahead and proceed with December's dates before we approve that.
I'm sorry, the resolution that I, up here doesn't say what you just described. So, but if that's what we're voting on, that's fine with me.
Okay, and I'll double-check and make sure that it is, as I am stating here today. Thank you. For December, the December sixth proclamation session will not be held. In lieu of that, it will be a regular meeting at nine o'clock AM. December thirteenth would be a nine o'clock AM meeting. And the December twenty-seventh regularly scheduled meeting, it would be canceled if these resolutions are approved. And so we did have a motion and second for item number two, which are the November dates.
Are there any other questions or comments? It's the eighth?
Sure, no, November first, and we will be putting these dates out on the council, on the website. But November first, the proclamation session would be canceled. Uh, November eighth, it will be nine o'clock AM. November fifteenth, five thirty PM. And then the work session on November twenty-ninth will be at nine o'clock AM. And then December, it would be, December sixth would be a regular meeting in lieu of a proclamation session. It will begin at nine o'clock AM. And then December thirteenth would be a nine o'clock AM meeting. December twenty-seventh, that regularly scheduled meeting would be canceled.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's scheduled.
Also, number three.
And if you would, as soon as you can, request from the council to send a, send a, an email with all those dates.
Yes, we will, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
And then that was number two. So number three, that's the meeting dates for December.
All right, motion and a second to approve the change of the dates in December, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, they're approved as well. Motion and a second, receive the minutes. Anybody want any of these pulled or discussed? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And Mr. Mayor, I have two add-on resolutions to excuse Counselor Huff and Counselor Garrett from today's meeting.
Motion and a second to, to excuse the counselors, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They're excused.
Next, we have board appointments. We have the council district seat appointments for the Public Safety Advisory Commission. We have for District One, the seat of Byron Hickey. These seats are open for nomination by the respective counselor.
Senator, someone, but you said the, the duties and the dates. So I do have two people, but they, they want to know the, the dates of the meetings, times, and all like that, and their duties primarily.
Yes, sir, we'll get that information to you. Thank you. Then we have Council District Five. For Council District Nine, Counselor Thomas is renominating Scott Taft to serve another term, and he may be confirmed.
Motion, second to confirm Mr. Taft, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Next, we have council's confirmation organizations or agency nominations that may be confirmed for this meeting for the Historic and Architectural Review Board. The Liberty Cultural Center is nominating Mr. Zeph Baker to fill this unexpired term of Mr. Robert Anderson.
Well, there's a motion to confirm Mr. Baker, and I.
Is there a second?
I don't hear a second.
Okay.
All right.
We, we can ask the Liberty Cultural Center to resubmit another nominee for council's consideration.
All right, please do.
And we will do that. Thank you. Next, we have council appointments, any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the Land Bank Authority, the seat of Tyler Pritchard, it is open for nominations. Mr. Pritchard does not desire reappointment. And lastly, we have upcoming board appointments. We have the Airport Commission, the airport submits a recommendation and council confirms. Then we have the Columbus Board of Health, these are council appointments. We have the Board of Tax Assessors, that's council's appointment. The Cooperative Extension Advisory Board, that's council's appointment. The Personnel Review Board, that's council's appointment as well. Recreation Advisory Board, that's the council's appointment. And the Medical Center Hospital Authority, the authority makes a selection and the council confirms. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you ma'am. All right, the motion to go into executive session where we need to discuss litigation and personnel. We have a second as well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we, we're in executive session, let's clear the chambers. All right, we are back in regular session. We had gone into executive session to discuss litigation and personnel, no votes were taken. We'll call on our city attorney. Mr. Fay?
Thank you, Mayor. You have a resolution around the table before you that would authorize a refund of twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-one cents to the Medical Center Hospital Authority for nine-ten Tableton Road.
Motion and a second to approve, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, that is approved. All right, Counselor Tucker?
Yes, before, before we adjourn, Mayor Pro Tem brought up something to my attention. I'm not sure the name of the property, I think it might be Crystal Lake, is that what it is? Yeah. Okay, they've had several issues in that community regarding, I guess, like plumbing. At one time, all the homes had no water. Um, it was like a hundred and seventy-five homes that didn't have water. And now it looks like they're having sewage, um, issues, and they are saying that it smells like rotten eggs.
We can, yeah, we can, we can get that checked on, seemed like there had been another complaint. Deputy City Manager.
Yes, so, uh, Inspection and Co. Director, we received complaints starting last week, and so they're already looking into that case, they've sent officers out there today. So they'll have follow-up to that particular complaint from last week.
Yeah, I just, you know, this is my first time seeing it, um, when I received the email, I didn't get it beforehand. Maybe it's going to my junk, my junk mail, but I just wanted to bring it to the attention, because it was really bad the last time, we were having to get water from community partners, you know, donating, and I just wanted to make sure they were taken care of.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and before we, before we adjourn, I'll, I'll mention that next, next week on the eighteenth, we'll have a Let's Talk Columbus. We had put it on hiatus during COVID, but we'll kick them back off. We have quarterly meetings, it'll be the eighteenth, right here in council chambers, at the Red McDaniel Citizen Service Center from five thirty to seven o'clock. So all the residents of Muskogee County are more than welcome to come, we'll have department heads here, many of the counselors will be here. And you'll have an opportunity to discuss whatever you want to discuss about our city. All right? And that's it, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn? All right, motion, second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We stand adjourned.